All right, we will call to order the City Council Regular Meeting and Budget Discussion Number Three Agenda for August 28, 2023 at 6:30 PM. If you would, if all would rise and join us as Councilmember Berry leads us in an invocation, followed by Councilmember Carbone to the pledges of both of our flag. Thank you. All right, thank you for all, for everybody that came out tonight. We've got a full agenda, and as we move through it, we will be moving down through our agenda and get to our public hearings here in just a minute. As we do, we'll move forward to road call and certification of quorum. Madam Secretary, I will certify that we have a quorum present, as all members of the council are present with the exception of Member Hernandez, who is absent from the chambers and will be absent the remainder of the evening. Before we move to citizens' comments, I'd like to take a quick point of personal privilege. We, as everybody knows, we are in drought conditions, and thank you for the prayers of our tree canopy, because it certainly is going to help yards save their grass as best we can as we get through this. But with that, I'd like to turn it over to our city manager, Trent Epperson, to talk about the decisions making, making their way through staff on the next movement going to Stage Two.
Thank you, Mayor, and good evening, council, and welcome all of those in attendance today. Just want to give everyone an update that we've been in Stage One drought restrictions for several weeks now. Stage One is voluntary, and we made the decision today that we will be moving to mandatory restrictions. We'll start pushing out the message tomorrow, and that'll go into effect Wednesday. So, moving to Stage Two, what that means is that we have a prohibition on residential and non-residential watering between 9:00 AM and 7:00 PM, and then the residents can only, or you can only water twice per week on your trash day. So watering has to be between 7:00 PM and 9:00 AM. It'll be limited to twice per week. So, those will go into effect Wednesday. We'll push out as much information as we can, so we get everyone aware of that. We'll obviously be flexible as people are learning about it, giving people warnings initially, but if, if we have people that continually violate that, we do have enforcement mechanisms and are able to find folks on that. Excuse me. Our system is doing well, but as you may have heard, City of Houston recently went to Stage Two restrictions. We do get water from City of Houston at two different take points, and that has limited our ability to get our full amount from one of those take points, so that impacts us. We'll continue to monitor the system, and we got great men and women that are working that every day to keep everything working, repairing our main breaks as quickly as they, as they occur, so that we minimize our water loss. And so we'll continue to do that, monitor that, and as soon as we see some break in the weather and some, some rain, we'll be able to, to ease those restrictions off. But appreciate the opportunity to share that out, Mayor, and we'll have much more information out tomorrow. Thank you.
Yeah, lots of information will be coming out about that. Those of you that are here, as we, and our communications staff starts pushing that out, any help, just pushing that out to let people know the better. We don't want necessarily be in a position where we're having to be, you know, too difficult on people at the same time. Water's a very precious resource, and in those days and times, it's getting tougher and tougher and tougher to meet demand. So we've got a, we've got a lower demand, because we only have so much supply. So, just that time of the year, and most of all, let's just pray for some rain, and that will take care of our situation a lot quicker than, than us going through a rationing situation. So, with that, we'll move forward. We do have a couple of citizens' comments, but they signed up to speak specifically on one of our public hearings, so we will get to them during that public hearing. With that, we'll move to public hearing number one, and then, Martin, are you laying these out tonight? All right, and before we do, I'd like to just take a quick moment. I see John McDonald in the back, and I'd like to let those of you in the audience know, but as well as council and the rest of our staff, Mr. McDonald is going to be moving on from us here shortly, taking another job in another city, in fact, leading that city as their city administrator, and we'd just like to take the moment to thank you for the last several years. I think you've been here seven, eight years?
Six years.
Six years, and maybe it felt like eight, I don't know. And, and those good things, but John, you've done a great job here, and I appreciate the work and effort that you put into community development and the team that you've got over there today, and we wish you well in Spring Valley Village, so as you move on. Thank you. With that, Martin, if you would, read into the record the reason for the public hearing and move into the staff, staff report.
Sure thing, Mayor, thank you. So, this first public hearing is a request by Adam Clint, Beacon Land Services applicant on behalf of PRD Land Development Services, representing BAHAM Interests Limited Partnership Owner, for approval of a zone change for 3.842-8452 acres of land from the General Business, GB District to GC, or General Commercial GC District. This is generally located at 7029 Broadway here in Pearland. So this is a zoning map and aerial showing the current zonings of the properties all around this subject property. As you can see, it's currently general business, and there is general commercial just to the east of the subject property. All of the properties within this quadrant are in the business-commercial, future land use category. And then when we take a look at the actual aerial, all of the surrounding uses, you can see that there's some undeveloped property, both to the north and east, fast food restaurant to the southwest, and then a shopping center just to the west. This is viewed looking directly towards the property from across the street. If I can draw your attention to the public notice sign, you'll notice one of our new public notice QR codes captured within this image. That's a means to help the public guide them to the public hearings page, and you'll notice those roll out throughout the fall and winter as that becomes standard for our notices. So with all of that, staff recommends approval of the proposed zone change from the general business to general commercial. The Planning and Zoning Commission held their regular meeting on August 7. At that meeting, there were a couple topics discussed, specifically what the future development of the property was, and that this was just kind of a speculative, as there's no current identified end user, and that the P&amp;Z voted five to zero to approve the recommendation to change from general business to general commercial. Mayor, pass back to you.
All right, thank you, Martin. Is Adam Clint the applicant available? Thank you, do you have a presentation? You're here to answer, if, if we have any questions, we'll be sure to call on you. Thank you for being here tonight. As we move forward, we'll open it up to the public. Those wishing to speak for or against this proposed request can go to the podium, give us your name and address. You have three minutes to speak. Second attempt, those wishing to speak for or against this proposed request. Third and final time, those wishing to speak for or against this proposed request. Seeing no one move in that direction, we'll turn it over to City Council for questions, comments, concerns. Any questions or comments? Member Cade?
It opens it up. The list for general business isn't on here, but it, it significantly greater use, more permitted uses than for GC than GB. Is that true or no?
Correct, so the intensity in allowed uses does increase from the general business to general commercial district.
Still CUPs for auto or?
Correct. Anything that's identified within the land use category that requires a conditional use permit would come back through council approval.
I would imagine it would, making a general commercial teamed with the one next door to actually make both of those properties a little bit more developable. Biggest issue on both these properties is drainage. Most of the drainage has to come under 518. That's where it goes. So, instead of, you would think it would go to north of the slough, but it doesn't. About half the track comes under 518 and, and across, which greatly limits how the detention is done. So I would imagine somebody would be wise to put this together with the one on the, on the corner and make it a single track. Any other questions, comments?
Yeah, why? What, I mean, why go through this effort now without, I mean, based on what, what the information was to planning and zoning? You know, if you have no idea what you want to do, why go through the trouble of doing a zone change? You obviously have to have some idea. It doesn't fit in the general commercial, right?
Yeah, I can answer that. My name's Adam Clint. My address is 1304 Langham Creek Drive, Houston, Texas. So, we initially, when we started this process, we initially did have a client that wanted to turn it into a business park, but that fell through, so the owner just wanted to finish up the process since it's already started.
Can, can you speak into the microphone? I can't really hear you.
I said, originally, we did have a, someone that was going to purchase the property and turn it into a business park, but that fell through, so we, owner basically just wanted to finish up the process since we had already started it.
Is the business park allowable under GB?
So, within the GB district, you can have an office development, so that would have been an allowed use.
Any other questions or thoughts? Seeing none, we'll close this public hearing and move to new business item number one. Mr. Carbone, would you present that item, please?
Thank you, Mayor, consideration and possible action, first reading of ordinance 2000M-249, so moved.
Second. We have a motion of second. We've had staff report, as well as input from council, as well as the public. With that, Madam Secretary, we'll call for the vote.
Member Carbone?
Aye.
Member Kamkar? Member Cade?
Aye.
Member Berry?
Aye.
Member Patel?
Aye.
Mayor Potemcoza?
Aye.
Motion passes six to zero.
All right, moving forward, public hearing number two. Martin, same drill on item number two.
Thank you, Mayor. So this is a request by Tessie Gurley, applicant on behalf of Barclay Barnett Owner, for approval of a zone change for 1.11 acres of land from Old Townsite Residential District to Old Townsite Mixed Use District. This property is generally at 2430 South Austin Avenue. So again, this is an aerial map showing the zoning of the properties around this area. As you can see, there are R2 to the south and to the west, and then you have Old Town Residential across South Austin Street, and then Old Town General Business just to the north. This property, the requesting property and the property to the north are within the retail offices and services, and then the village district is just to the south and then along the east side. So taking a look at the aerial, you can see single-family homes on three sides, and then it is adjacent to a shopping center and a preschool along the north. This is some views of the site from South Austin. And then staff recommended approval of the proposed zone change from OTR to OTMU, that's what that first sentence should say. And then the Planning and Zoning Commission held their regular meeting on August 7. At that meeting, there were some residents who discussed flooding, traffic, and future development of the site, after which the P&amp;Z voted four to one to approve the recommendation from the OTR to OTMU District. Commissioner Fuertes was the only member in dissent, and they voted against citing a lack of Old Town mixed use within the direct vicinity. With that, Mayor, I'll pass back to you.
All right, thank you. Ms. Gurley, I see you here. Do you have a presentation for us tonight? Just here to answer questions, all right? Thank you, as always, for being here tonight. With that, we'll move to the public. Those wishing to speak for or against this proposed request can go to the podium, give us your name and address, and have three minutes to speak. Second attempt, those wishing to speak for or against this proposed request. And third and final time, those wishing to speak for or against this proposed request. Seeing no one moving in that direction, we'll turn it open to, over to council for questions, comments, concerns. Mayor Potem, you got one?
Yes, Mayor. Ms. Gurley, could you go to the podium, please? So just out of curiosity, as far as moving from the zoning from the OTR to the OTMU, do y'all have any ideas on what you want to do with this piece of property and the buildings that are on it?
Sure. Tessie Gurley, 2378 Sub ballpark, League City. Actually, just not really. I'm wanting to take the house and turn it into commercial use, just because it's, it is a house, but it's completely, there's nothing in the house. It's been just basically building with rooms, and I just feel like to get it inhabited and make it not really a place for undesirables to just hold up, that it would be better to have a business in there. And to me, it's, it's very old. It was built in 1939, so I'm really just trying to save it and, and get a business in there, but whatever would be office, something like that.
Okay, all right, thank you very much.
All right, good deal. Any other questions or comments? Member Carbone?
Thank you, Mayor. So I know public comments at P&amp;Z asked about potential drainage issues. I mean, the structure's already there, but I assume that there'd have to be some parking that would trigger drainage requirements. Can you speak to that?
Sure thing, Member Carbone. So during the development process, whenever they go to change the use of that structure or to put a new use within there, because that, there has not been a use of that structure for so long, it'll need to come up to UDC rules and regulations that would include any parking to be installed on this property, and then when it transfers from a residential use to a non-residential use, there will be a buffer that's required against the single-family homes. So those are two of the big-ticket items that will be triggered whenever this goes from a previous residential use to a non-residential use.
And so with the parking, will trigger drainage, and drainage, that'll require what engineered study to make sure it's not affecting the neighbors?
Correct, they'll have to have flood mitigation for any additional impervious coverage that they put out there.
Thank you.
Sounds good. Any other questions, comments?
Thank you. I just wanted to say thank you to Sister Gurley for trying to keep the historical building intact. The, I think it might be one of the oldest houses still standing in Pearland, and just thank you for keeping it intact.
Yeah, we often get asked, I wish we had some of our history. That means either somebody like the Gurleys or someone else would have to keep it, maintain it, and restore it, or the public has to own it. Otherwise, people have a right to do what they, they need to do with their property, take it down or whatever. I think going through designated certain places, historical, that's a whole different, you know, ballgame, but it's a beautiful home. I can see a great bed and breakfast. I can see an office. I can see any number of things that could be, that could be housed there. Shopping center to the north is pretty well going to limit, I think, certain things from happening there, just because of the proximity to it. But yeah, could be, could be a great use in our Old Town site. So with that, we're going to close the public hearing, move to new business item number two. Mr. Kamkar, would you present that, please?
Sir, excuse me, consideration, possible action, first reading of ordinance number two, 000M-250, so moved.
Second.
We have a motion of second. We've had staff report, as well as questions, comments from council, so with that, Madam Secretary, we'll call for the vote.
Member Kamkar?
Aye.
Member Cade?
Aye.
Member Berry?
Aye.
Member Patel?
Aye.
Mayor Potemcoza?
Aye.
Member Carbone?
Aye.
Motion passes six to zero.
So with that, we'll move to public hearing number three. Martin, take over.
Thank you, Mayor. So this is a, public hearing number three is a request by Joshua McGinnan, applicant on behalf of Renee McGuire, owner for approval of a zone change for 2.0784 acres of land from Single Family Residential Two District to General Business District. This property is generally located at 3888 Pearland Parkway. So again, this is the aerial and zoning map. You can see that this was a remnant from the subdivision property and maintains the R2 zoning district. It has Oak Ridge, just, or, yeah, no, Oakshire, just to the east, and then has detention to the south. The future land use plan calls for this to be in the medium-density residential. And then again, taking a closer look, you can see single-family residences to the west, north, and east, and then the detention just to the south. So this is a view across Pearland Parkway for the proposed property. And then, again, this went to the Planning and Zoning Commission at their August 7 meeting. Part of this recommendation was based on their original ask, and staff did not recommend approval of the GB. However, we were recommending a, recommending approval for a lower commercial intensity, being either the neighborhood service or office professional. During the Planning and Zoning Commission's discussion, they talked about some traffic issues, compatibility with the existing residential zoning to the west, and then their desired intentions for development, for this not to end up as a strip center. Afterwards, from all of the discussion with the residents in the community, the Planning and Zoning Commission recommended to approve a zone change from the R2 to Neighborhood Services. So they did end up recommending approval for the lower zoning classification. We bring this, we bring each one of the zone change requests with the applicant's original request, so that's why it's before you as general business. Should the council seek to agree with the Planning and Zoning Commission for Neighborhood Services, then you would simply make the amendment at the next new business item. With that, I'll pass back to you, Mayor.
All right, thank you for that. Is the applicant present? All right, thank you. Do you have a presentation? Couple things, all right? Just give us your name and address at the podium and give us your presentation. Thank you for being here tonight.
Absolutely. Josh McGinn, 7719 Jenkins, Pearland.
Absolutely. Josh McGinn, 7719 Jenkins, Pearland, Texas. Let me see. Couple of people have asked, you know, what do you, what do you plan on doing with it? So just click on this, Josh. Josh set this up for me. He said, just click here. Why he's getting this set up, I just want to say, so both me and my wife are business, local business owners here in Pearland. I've got a surveying business, professional land surveying business. My wife has a gym indoors, and, and we're both leasing right now. We're both in Pearland, just off 35. The goal is to have our own piece of property and have our, both of our businesses in the same building and have a little bit of extra space here to lease out for the community services, just, just different things. We're not looking for any kind of retail stuff, and we want to keep it kind of professional like we are, or, you know, professional services. Oh, it's on there. Oh, went in looking up. Okay. So this is the basic general layout. As you see, I can't zoom. I don't have a mouse. Well, I'll just use the cursor. So right here is the building. I don't know if you can tell the way I drew this, and obviously the parking. You'll see when I turn the aerial on in the background, this matches up with the existing turn lanes that already exist right there, and you can see all the, the existing neighborhoods that, that adjoin this. Right here. So I don't know if everybody can see that very well, but I tried my best. Same layout, just put the aerial in the background so everybody can see. This land is already platted, and when it was platted, there was already a buffer zone built in right here for the adjacent Town Lake. Obviously, there's no back neighbors except for BDD4 detention channel, and then you got Pearland Parkway. Just try to keep it simple, and just wanted to give everybody an idea of what the general layout is.
Okay. Thank you for that. Obviously, you're here for any questions if we have them. So again, thank you for being here. Makes sense on this piece of property. So with that, we'll move to those wishing to speak for or against this proposed request. Can go to the podium, give us your name and address for the record, and you have three minutes to speak. Thank you, sir. Justin, you know the drill.
6302 Broadway, Justin Barnett, R West Development. I come in support of this zone change because it helps me sell it. So we've held on to this for 23 years. It was a remnant. I actually liked the historical idea of it because I got to learn about why it was a remnant of Town Lake. At that time, when finished Town Lake, we were really unsure what the direction of Pearland Parkway would be. And so it was left alone, thinking they were unsure of how they were going to mold Pearland Parkway through there. So it's been for sale for, off and on for 23 years. No residential developer has ever approached us and put a bona fide offer in to take it and develop it. So we're here in support of a zone change that would allow a small professional development to come in and utilize this down from our, we're very protective of this as well as, as, as we go, move forward with French Quarter and Chateau Le Brie Senior Living. So this fully supports what we would love to have there. Thank you.
Thank you for that. Second attempt, those wishing to speak for or against this proposed request? Sure, you can, you can do it under citizens to be heard, under for and against. Thank you.
Just, I did want to add that we are, we would still like to request the zone change to GB. And, and really, the main reason is my wife's gym is the Gym Healthcare. And if it is Neighborhood Services, it still allows South Point Surveying and our other ideas. But for her to come in, we would have to do a CUP and everything. But just to make it more general, we're, we're looking for both of us to move in.
Gotcha. Thank you for that. All right. Third and final time, those wishing to speak for or against this proposed request. Seeing no one move in that direction, we will turn it over to council for questions, comments, concerns. You have a question?
So the zone change is for Neighborhood Services?
No, the zone change is for general business. Planning and Zoning Commission, Martin or Lawrence, you might want to reiterate what they, what and how they voted.
Yes, sir. So I don't recall the specific vote. Martin will answer that. However, I would say that because Planning and Zoning Commission voted to downgrade to Neighborhood Services, it will take a super majority of city council to up that from NS to anything above NS. So with six people here, it will take unanimous vote to get to that tonight. I'm sorry, with seven people here, it will take six.
There's six voting.
Yeah, with six. It'll take six people. It, it would have to be unanimous.
That's what I needed to hear. Thank you.
Thank you for that. Mr. Kamkar?
Thank you for this diagram, by the way. This is actually super helpful. Appreciate that. Is there any architectural control or any other requirements that are going to come on with this? I'm, I'm very aware that it's a very residential area, and the use is not very residential. And I understand why the remnant item makes complete sense. I thought that's pragmatic from the previous developer. But is there anything to dictate anything on how it's going to look?
To answer that, Member Kamkar, the property fronts out onto Pearland Parkway, and Pearland Parkway is in the corridor overlay district. So the corridor overlay district requires some articulation on the building and a certain level of transparency with windows. But there is no material selection that is enforceable right now.
If they go to Neighborhood Services, are they going to have to do any kind of screening or any other items, greenery, things of that nature?
Only the normal buffer requirements for the adjacent residences.
And assuming the applicant is aware of those requirements?
We've had a pre-development with the applicant where they presented a similar site plan and received, you know, all of staff's comments.
Fully aware. Yes, sir. And, and the general idea is to have more of a brick facade. But I understand that this is in the overlay district, and it'll be fully complied. I live and work in this neighborhood. I want it to be beautiful as well, so.
People are going to know it, and they'll let you know it.
Oh, yeah, for sure.
Just real quick, are you aware of our tree ordinance?
Partially, but I, I know that there, there's a ratio that, of how many trees need to be in there. But there is a 25-foot buffer zone that's about.
Do you have any heartburn on that? Has any heartburn on that issue been relayed to the staff in those pre-development meetings?
None. I don't have an issue with planting multiple trees.
I live in that subdivision next door to it. I don't believe there's any protected trees on the property.
And I'm more than happy to do it.
Oh, no, just asking for posterity. So, all right. Appreciate a small business owner wanting to continue to invest, and you have to live close by. I don't let, don't think you'll let it go to pot. So excited for you. Thank you.
Mayor, if you don't mind, I, Martin, in Neighborhood Services allow for doctor's office or health offices? I thought, I thought they did. Oh, gyms. I thought you said Jones.
Now, the question is the gym.
Yeah, gyms are a CUP.
The health aspect.
Gyms are, require a CUP and a Neighborhood Services district. And that's something we, we have on our list to change. I think the main concern here is just, general business is such a wider, heavier, intensive category for a smaller property isolated by a residential area. So like auto parts, auto, auto focus stores could go here under general business. And so it just kind of allows a higher density of use.
Right, that small piece that backs up to all those homes and out of, you know, the super majority aspect, I want to, I'm trying, I thought he, the health, the health part of the gym is what was, he was concerned with, not the gym part of the gym. Thank you.
John or Martin, just to clarify that, so if it went Neighborhood Services as the planning and zoning, office type uses, I would imagine the surveying office, those types of things would be allowed by right. It's the, the gym that would require CUP?
Yes, and it currently would. It's the same thing that when we went over that, that one on Broadway this past, on the, on Old Town, Iron 24, the same issue was, I think we all agreed it was a fine fit. It's just one of the old CUPs that hasn't been corrected yet. And it's on our list to take forward as we do the UDC. So that is a potential, you know, process that we'll have to go through for that use. But I think based on the added protection level to the neighborhood, it's, it's worth it.
Thank you for clarifying that. Mayor?
That was my exact issue with this whole deal by going to Neighborhood Services. Now, there's going to be a whole new process that has to get kicked off to do the CUP. And if, if the owner has gone through this much trouble to kind of do this preliminary layout for us, is, what, what's your timeline for starting construction?
I would say within the next, I, I want to really break ground within 12 months after, after contract. And we should be doing a contract after the.
Yeah, by then, we'd have to have all of our permitting, I mean, our, our UDC update in order to avoid the whole entire CUP process. You know, it kind of goes back to my whole thing of, you know, it makes sense to me to, if there, we have two businesses that are currently in Pearland. You know, they, they want to merge their businesses, they own a piece of property in Pearland, create more property value in the city of Pearland, towards the city of Pearland. I don't see the point in making them have to go through the CUP process. I think it's just a little bit more cumbersome for them. And then in the spirit of doing business with the city of Pearland and making it a little bit easier, I'd be fine with the current zoning.
All right. Any other questions, comments? Mr. Kamkar? You have, no. Carbone?
Thank you, Mayor. I think P and Z got it right for this parcel. I think Neighborhood Services fits better. When you look at the list of permitted uses by right, if it went straight GB, I think the neighborhood, both neighborhoods would take issue with that. So I'm a fan of going NS. If the UDC is updated by the time you want to move a gym in, then you can. If not, the CUP process will take you 30, 45 days. But I think it gives us that protection for the neighborhood next door.
I am supportive of a member of Carbone's comments, and I'm going to trend that way.
I'll add to what they had to say. I've, I've had multiple residents from the Oakbrook section right across the street reach out to me in regards to what would be there and their concerns with it were. So as far as Neighborhood Services, I'm in support of that. Not to restrict y'all, but just to be able to have a little bit more control for the neighborhood that's, that you'll be in their backyard of. So that's wrapping.
Any other questions, comments? You know, as a, somebody who lives in Town Lake, I, my suggestion is a passage, second reading to go to Neighborhood Services. I would come in and get the CUP. You've got the makings of a, of a site plan, so you're, I think you know a guy that can put a site plan together. So I, I would do the site plan, and I'd, I'd come right back in with CUP before you spend any other dollars down the line. Get it locked in. You do have 12 months to pull your permits and get going. That's fits within the timeline of what you're talking about. So I would, I would do that immediately and, and come back in. And what they're saying, I think most of the residents would, would rather, it's not a residential piece. I mean, as, as much as somebody would love for, you know, that to be a residential home, it's, it's not a residential tract anymore, and hasn't been since it was left out. Or Renee would have figured out a way to put three houses on it or four houses on it. And so, yeah, so I, I, my advice would get right back in here and get the CUP locked up while you got a council that's supportive of what you're trying to do. Yep, perfect. Thank you, Mayor. All right. Any other questions, comments? With that, we'll close the, Mayor Protim?
So when we have the vote, we're voting for?
Well, when we go to, we'll have to amend from GB to NS. Yeah, thank you.
Because whoever's putting it on the table can put it on the table as NS.
We can put it on as, as NS. So with that, we close the public hearing. With that, we'll move to new business item number two. Mayor Protim, would you place that on the table as Neighborhood Services?
You mean number three?
Number three, excuse me.
All right. Consideration, possible action, first reading of ordinance number 2000M-251, making it with Neighborhood Services. So moved.
Second.
We have a motion of second. We've had staff report as well as questions, comments from council. With that, Madam Secretary, we'll call for the vote.
Mayor Protim Kozza?
Aye.
Member Carbone?
Aye.
Member Kamkar?
Aye.
Member Cade?
Aye.
Member Barry?
Aye.
Member Patel?
Aye.
The motion passes six to zero.
Awesome. Thank you for that. We wish you well. Thank you for being here tonight. With that, we will, before I do, everybody in the room, I guess you, you see we have some of our Boy Scouts here today. We want to thank you guys for coming out. They're here not for their citizenship badge, but to get their communication badge. So part of, part of their hope tonight was this, this is a perfect process tonight. They couldn't have picked a better night to be here because of the public hearing process. Have something on the table, have people kind of for and against and, and talking through it. So, so you couldn't have had a better night to be able to do that. But we, we always love to have our scouts come out. It's a great program here in the Pearland area. Tremendous number of Eagles that come all the way up. My encouragement is go all the way to Eagle. And so be a great opportunity to do that. With that, we'll turn to public hearing number four. Martin, last time.
Thank you, Mayor. So for public hearing number four, this is a request by Prasad Maragrani of Petricor Technical Group LLC, applicant on behalf of Kashif Kabani, owner for approval of a conditional use permit for a gasoline station within the general business district. This is approximately on 0.8583 acres of land with the general location of 4109 Manville Road. So again, showing the aerial and zoning of the property. You can see the general business that it currently is and surrounded on both the north and the east by SR15, suburban residential with 15,000 square foot minimum lot size. This is within a minor retail node for the future land use plan. That minor retail node is generally for major intersections where we expect for commercial development to take place at the, at the hard corners. Specifically looking at the site, you'll see it has some undeveloped property, and then a single family residential just to the east. And then on the opposite corner is property within the city of Manville. Taking a look at the actual site itself, you'll see that the prior gas station has been demolished, and we have a pad site. And then to give you some additional history, this had a gas station and convenience store developed in 1984. It was annexed into the city in 1997 and then platted in 2020, where the city council had previously approved a gas station in November of 2020. That prior CUP expired in November of 2021. Then a commercial permit for the gas station was submitted in July of 2022. And at that time, staff let the applicant know that a new CUP would be necessary due to the expiration of the prior CUP. The gas station was just demolished here a couple of months ago in 2023. So this is the proposed site plan. You can see that they've shifted the building to face onto Bailey Road. Then this is the proposed landscape plan. You can see the residential buffers along the north side of the property and along the east side. Here are some renderings that they have provided of the site. And you can see an additional aerial site rendering. And then rendering just of the building with the canopy removed. Again, of the, with the site and the canopy removed. So looking at the density map for the gas stations, you can see that there are two within. So looking at the density map for the gas stations, you can see that there are two within one mile. One of those is outside of the city of Pearland and then six within two miles. Again, one of those being outside and then 13 within three miles. And when you get out to that far of a range, there are two that are located outside of the city of Pearland. So staff's analysis on this, this meets the criteria for approval and is consistent with the comprehensive plan. We had some additional recommendations pertaining to the materials for the facade, the fuel canopy, and then the dumpster enclosure. Those recommended conditions end up reading on the screen to have the exterior building facades be developed in substantial conformance with materials as depicted. To have the columns supporting the fuel station canopy be wrapped with a masonry material that is consistent with the architectural elements of the principal building. Then the dumpster enclosure shall be made of the same material and primary color as the main building. And just to identify, the dumpster enclosure is on the Manville side. So having it with the same material helps to make it blend into the site and not be quite as much of a distraction, which you can see that dumpster enclosure shown on the site plan itself. So afterwards, we recommended approval, or staff recommended approval of the conditional use permit. Again, this went to the August 7th Planning and Zoning Commission. From there, there were some adjacent property owners discussing privacy, drainage, and safety. Afterwards, the Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval of the CUP with a vote of four to one. They added an additional condition to have the required six-foot masonry wall upgraded to an eight-foot wall. And that was added as a fourth condition for approval. And then the only dissenting comment was from Commissioner Dansby, who discussed that the additional condition was not a part of the original CUP. So that was his dissenting opinion from the rest of the PNC. With that, I'll pass back to you, Mayor.
Thank you, Martin, for that. Is the applicant present? All right. Do you have a presentation? Okay, we may have some when we get to that point. Thank you for being here tonight. With that, we will open it up for those wishing to speak for or against this proposed request. We do have the two citizens that did sign up to speak. They can do that during the public hearing now. So I know the, I know both Fridays are here. Both Fridays are here on a Monday. How's that? Do y'all wish to speak now?
All right. So Diane Friday, if you'd go up to the podium, you have three minutes. Please state your name and address for the record, please.
All right. And thank you for being here.
Thank you for having us, Mr. Mayor and, and council members. My name is Diane Friday. I live at 7026 Heron Lane. It's the property directly to the east of the property in question. On some of the diagrams, it's located on the top. We brought several concerns before the Planning and Zoning Committee, and we were basically essentially told it was a station before and it can be a station again. I'm afraid that this point of view overlooks some very important points. The original gas station was built 40 or so years ago, and a lot has changed during that time. Our building codes and regulations have changed. The size of convenience stores have changed. They're, they're bigger. They're bigger now. They have more pumps. As the gentleman on staff said, the previous lot, two acres is small for general business now. This lot is less than one acre. I'd like to focus, however, on the scientific research that we now have on the hazards of fuel vapor. Fuel vapor contains chemicals which are hazards to our health. One of these is benzene, which is a known human carcinogen, and is especially associated with cancer in children. One particular study in 2018 looked at benzene levels in the atmosphere around a selection of United States gas stations. They measured hazardous levels of benzene at 164 feet away, or 50 meters, from the center of the properties they studied, and sometimes that pollution went up to 525 feet away. The previous station on this lot had pumps that were approximately 164 feet away from our property line. So in that case, most of the days benzene pollution would stay on the gas station property. The new station has moved the pumps. There will now be a 25-foot landscaping barrier and then the pumps right there on our property line. That puts almost our entire backyard in the 164-foot range where these hazardous levels were measured. On our side of the fence, directly squarely in that range, is my children's playground. It's my garden space. And just beyond that is where our chickens play and live. And we also co-host our homeschool co-op and do outdoor lessons at our home. I cannot in good conscience allow my children or my children's friends to play in an area where I know there are cancer-causing chemicals in the air. It is time to retire this once a gas station, always a gas station precedent. It is time to set a new precedent to protect our children, not just my children, but all the children in Pearland. It is time to set a new precedent that we do not allow gas stations to be on property lines, sharing property lines with residential properties. I will wrap it up. I see I'm just about out of time. I just want to say if, if we must allow this gas station to be here, if we must ignore all of this, we would like to request that the pumps be returned to their original location on Manville, along with vent pipes, which are a primary source of benzene pollution, to put them as far away from our property line as possible. We'd like to request top-of-the-line vapor recovery systems. And for our privacy, a fence tall enough or a wall tall enough for us to not see the building or the fuel canopy. Thank you. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much for those comments. Now if Michael Friday would step to the podium, state your name, address, and you'll have three minutes to speak as well. Thank you for coming out.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and City Council. I am Michael Friday at 7026 Heron Lane. So when we moved in, the, the old pump canopy was due west of our property, approximately 164 feet, like my wife stated, and it was also nominally on a crosswind. So that's one reason why when we moved in, we were unconcerned with the potential pollution coming onto our property. But the new location is much closer to the southwest, off of the southwest corner of our property. And with winds being nominal south to southeast, it may not always be a problem, but sometimes you do get winds that range to, from the southwest. So in fact, in the last 17 days, there have been five days that the, whatever plumes coming off the station would have gone over our property. And some of these pollutants are not only just benzene, but also toluene, ethyl benzene, xylene. And all of these are also known to be a heavier weight than air. So they're going to, they're not just going to rise above and go away. They're going to sink down onto us. You know, benzene's a carcinogen, toluene is a toxic irritant, ethyl benzene's also toxic irritant, and xylene is known to be a narcotic in high concentrations. So that's probably what makes people loopy if they're around too much fuel vapors. We would like to know if they can put the pumps back into, back along the, along Manville or somehow make sure that any venting is done as far west and north on the property as possible. Keep the wall as tall as possible because now the new structure is designed to be much closer to our property line than the original configuration of that station. I want to make sure that whatever vapor recovery venting system they use are going to be the most up to date, just to keep the rest of our neighborhood as protected as possible from pollutants because we don't, we won't be able to move Pearland forward. You know, be a modern city, modern station, modern pollution controls. And that's assuming that it must be in our station because it's been out of service in six years and no one has really missed it. And I was also curious, you know, there's a fire code, which doesn't really give you any more standoff branch. It seems they allow pumps and vents a little bit closer to the property. But does that actually account for this hot, dry, windy weather that we've had this summer? And I think the council will support their time.
Thank you for that. We will open it up for those wishing to speak for or against this proposed request. Want to thank both the Fridays for being here and offering your comments for the public record. Second attempt, those wishing to speak for or against this proposed request. Third and final time, those wishing to speak for or against this proposed request. All right. We'll open it up to questions from council. I do have a couple of questions on the site plan. I think they make some valid, some valid comments, whether or not the building and the pumps, you know, kind of where they are. I'm noticing on the, on the site plan, are they, it looks and it appears when you look at the Google Earth map, the old layout is still up. So the amount of impervious cover then versus now, it, it looks like it's greatly increasing. I know we're, we're looking at a CUP. It's not a zone thing. It's not a, it's a CUP. But my question is, they're increasing the impervious cover, so what about detention? So I'm not sure if the applicant has taken into consideration. He may have it under the parking. I'm trying to see it on the, on the colored site plan here. Do you have detention added into this?
Yes. My name is Prasad Maragani, 113815 Tarragon Bend, Rye, Richmond, Texas. They engineered on the project and yes, sir, the detention is underground for the whole project. We have provided more than the required drainage. The plans have already been submitted for this. And pending this planning approval, we would be submitting for final approval once we get the CUP approved. So the impervious cover, yes, it did change. It went higher. And the reason for the layout being this way was, as you can see, once the development restarted, we have lost about 35 foot on all sides of the property, which would not allow us to realign the fuel station, fuel canopy where it was originally before. That was the reason for the change. The original intent was to keep the actual layout as possible with the fuel canopy facing Manville Road, which is what we would have preferred, the client would have preferred. But with the way the amount of land has been lost and the existing driveway and the text art approval, which was the reason why our CUP expired, that's the only location we can get the driveway and we cannot put the canopy in any other location.
So, Martin, what are we, what are we losing here? Is it the 30-foot landscaping buffer that's causing the fuel stations to be moved to where they are now versus out on 1128?
Mayor, did?
I'm thinking from a site standpoint, even the distance site point, as well as lighting. If the fuel canopy was out on 1128 and the building, it was just rotated. Seems to me that would cut down on light pollution, as well as it would push the pumps further away from, from the homestead.
And to add on to that, both Manville and Bailey Road are within the corridor overlay district. So that's where you're seeing the enhanced landscaping from either side. Really and truly, the, the orientation of the building is at the request of the applicant engineer. So, you know.
Under CUP, we can require it.
Yeah. And as such, we can make amendments as long as they are, you know, willing to abide by those.
Martin, when was this property platted?
2020. The property was platted in 2020.
Okay. So the corridor overlay predated the, the platting?
Correct. And they went through the plating during, during the lockdown and COVID phase.
Well, if, if, if it was platted before we changed the UDC for the corridor overlay, they could have a vested right case to shrink the, shrink that. That's always why I asked that. So, all right, I'll open it up for questions, comments from council.
I thought the Fridays were very compelling, the things they said, also the pictures that they sent. Were also very compelling. I, there's 13 gas stations in a three-mile radius. This, I'm a hard no on this. I was already before the Fridays spoke, but that just made it more legitimate for me that this is, this is not the right place for this. We don't need another gas station. 13 in a three-mile radius, that's, that says enough for me. And then the Fridays, I appreciate y'all, appreciate y'all coming in and speaking to us. Thank you.
Thanks for that. Questions, comments? Member Cam Carr?
Martin, can you go over what are the requirements for the UDC, the UDC on the overlay district? Just to refresh my memory on that.
So the corridor overlay district has a variety of standards that get applied to buildings that are developed that have frontage along a overlay district or a road that's classified in the overlay district. With that, we have requirements for articulation and transparency within the building itself. We have enhanced landscape standards for both, or for any frontage road, any, any frontage that is along that road. And then we also have lighting standards that are implemented where they can't have greater than one candlefoot at the property line. Additionally, there's requirements for undergrounding of utilities, for bicycle parking. Those are just the.
And were there any comments or issues with that over the overlay requirements?
Now, as you can see, they are abiding by the landscape requirements for the overlay district on both Bailey and Manville Road.
The African had no issues with our tree ordinance in relation to this, with their screening?
Not that I'm aware of, but I'll let the applicant speak up.
No, sir. We actually provided more than required trees.
Star citizen. Appreciate that. Good to hear somebody supported that. I'm just going to say this, Mrs. Friday was overwhelmingly convincing in her, somebody who has three kids and the age of six. I hear, I hear the concern. The one thing, I'm not going to be supportive, and it's nothing to do with the applicant. The applicant's done an admirable job with what they've asked, but I, I can't unhear what I've heard. That being said, I would, I would say to the Fridays and their neighbors, this corner is going to be something. I don't know what it will be. But you have to be very comfortable with what the alternative may or may not be. Usually get one bite at the apple, not usually two. So I'm very happy to, to cast my vote not supporting this. But I, we cannot fight every fight, defend every use, but I just want you guys to be very aware of that. I'm not supportive. I appreciate the applicant's time, energy, and effort on this. I think their arguments are reasonable, but the city evolves and changes. And I think Mrs. Friday said that it's evolved and changed. And the 13 other gas stations in close proximity, I can't unhear that either. So I'm just not going to be supportive in this manner. But thank you to everybody involved.
Any other questions, comments? Mayor Protem?
I would like to ask this of the applicant. As far as the positioning of the convenience store and the fuel stations, if you were to rotate it 90 degrees and get it further away from the, the property, the Friday's property, would you be open for rotating that, the design layout?
That was our original site plan. Actually, at this point, we have started this design back in 2020 after the plat was done. Once a set of drawings were submitted, we went all the most through the end of permitting, but we had to, the text art permit was not obtained, so we had to go back and get that, in which time the CUP expired. So we resubmitted the plans with the revised layout because the, if we turn the layout, I would need a couple of assurances. I cannot, I need a landscaping buffer. I can provide 25-foot landscaping buffer to the property on the east and still be able to read the property. If I can get a concession on that one, yes, we could turn around, we could rotate it and keep the way it is right now. As a matter of fact, it's really, my client is not really happy with the building facing Bailey Road. He wanted it to face 1128 the way it is right now. But this was necessitated because of the easements and restrictions that we have in place. But if we can get a variance on one of those, yes, we can rotate it and move it around. And actually, at this stage, we've invested all the time and complete set of drawings. They are already in there. And this was supposed to be, I mean, like I said, the only thing we could not get was a text art driveway permit, which, as you know, dealing with text art takes, sometimes takes a lot of time. So we got a CUP approved, the drawing, design drawings were done. Because of the delay from the text art, we have, we had to come back for a CUP. Now, being said, that can be done. So if we can get some variances on this one, yes, we can rotate it and make it work for everybody. We even last time and during the PNC meeting, when we were asked if that wall could be raised up to eight feet, even though it becomes a structural wall and we have to redesign it, we agreed to that one.
Okay. As far, Lawrence, that's what I was going to ask you, as far as if we were to ask for it to be rotated so that we could compromise to be able to help Fridays out if we were to move with it, where it gets the pumps farther away from their property? Is that something we can handle tonight through a motion to change or? where it gets the pumps farther away from their property, um, is that something we can handle tonight through a, a motion to change or?
Yes, sir, it is. Uh, as it stands now, the site plan is not a condition. They're not mandated to build according to this site plan. However, if you were to pass a CUP, the whole purpose, the C is the condition. And the condition B, that it be reoriented and the canopy be closer to Manville Road. 1128. So you can pass that as a condition and then it would be up to the applicant and his design team to comply with that condition or to make a different business decision.
Thank you.
Mayor, um, I, I would agree with, uh, Councilmember Coza. If we can get this turned around 90 degrees, I think everybody will not be happy, but they won't be sad, right? So, uh, if we can give them a buffer of, I guess you said the 25-foot landscaping easement is causing the problems? Is that right?
Yes.
Can we pass that today and call it a day on this?
The landscape easement is not, uh, something that the city council has the authority to do. A variance for the landscape easement or any of the buffers are something that would either go to P and Z or to ZBA, depending on what it is that they submit. Uh, I'm not pretending to understand what the concern is because both of them are corridor overlay district, whether it be Manville or Bailey. So you have the same buffer on either side. It's an issue of reshaping the building to make sure that you've got the room that you need. So maybe it's a longer building or, I'm sorry, a wider building and it gets reoriented. Again, it's up to the design team, the design professionals to comply with whatever condition you adopt.
So do we, would it be better for them to table this today and go back?
If they go back, I'm sorry, I, I don't want to speak out of turn, but if, if you table it today, then they go to ZBA and then ZBA passes it and then it fails here. Um, at the next time that it comes back, uh, they put additional time and effort in it at that point. Um, I, I think the purpose of the 45-day clock or the 45-day turnaround for CUPs is traditionally to get to a quicker yes or no. Quicker, less expensive yes or no.
But wouldn't that, wouldn't that satisfy both, both parties for the most part? I know the Fridays aren't getting entirely everything that they want, but you know, they're getting the tanks further away. The business owner would prefer to have the building facing 1128. I think it's kind of a, it's a good, it's a compromise for both. And so is there, you're saying that there's no way that us, that we tonight can-
You could, you could pass the CUP.
The depth of the, the boundary is on the plat.
You can't adjust, you can't grant a variance tonight. That is not a possibility. However, you can fix the location of the canopy tonight and pass the CUP with the fixed location of the canopy.
And then if they, if we pass it that way in the design, uh, they don't get a variance through ZBA to shrink the actual buffer zone.
Then they just have to design the building differently so they have enough space.
So it's a, it's a square, it's a square piece of property. So rotating it, and I'm not an engineer and I'm not a surveyor, but if it's a square piece of property and it rotated, it seems to me it would, it, it would work. Um, the other things, I, I have a couple of questions back. Just, I meant to ask this just a minute ago. So Prasad, this, um, again, the, the gas location, the gas, uh, station that was built in 84, uh, it's been closed for some time. It's been closed for what, six years, five years?
Uh, no, it was, uh, during COVID, it was closed. It was shut down. It, it was originally intention of the owner was to remodel the existing store and not touch the building. But the way the gas canopies were, uh, they were creating quite a bit of a traffic hazard with the new driveway that was laid out on Bailey. Uh, the entrance and exit onto text art was not really working out. So that's the reason why he has decided to change that.
Okay. And, and this is where I have just a fundamental issue. If we believe in property rights, he had a, had a gasoline station that's been there since 84, um, closed the station in COVID, wants to remodel. It's really in his best interest to completely wholesale, bring it down and, and rebuild it. Um, and yet we've got members that say, we don't care about that. Uh, we don't care that your business is there. We want you to just do away with it, sell the property and let somebody else do something. I don't think that's fair. At the same time, trying to work with you to how we can coexist. Um, move those pumps away from, and, and again, most of the people that live in Wesley bought, bought there and that station was open and it was there. So it's trying to find a way to walk through this. Uh, and again, no one gets exactly what they want. Uh, but we find a compromise to allow business to go back and have a better building, much better, much safer, uh, be, meets better, uh, builds, uh, building codes, fire code, the whole thing at the same time. Uh, orienting, um, this building and the pumps back to 1128 helps with lighting, helps with moving those pumps and those, uh, tanks further away. Where is, are the tanks going to be directly underneath? Are the tanks, where are the tanks currently?
Uh, they're right there, east of, uh, the gas, the east of the canopy towards Bailey Street.
So if you were to rotate this, would those then be out closer to 1128?
Uh, we probably will have, we have to look at that. Depends on the fuel truck entrance and exit also. So we'll have to look at that once we turn it, turn them around.
And then you mentioned text dot, um, and their permitting process. Where are you on, on their permitting process right now?
Oh, we received the permit. We reapplied for the project in July 2022, 23, after we received the permit from, uh, text art. Uh, we have it, uh, good till the end of next year.
So this, uh, this entrance off of 1128 has received text art's approval?
Yes, it did.
Okay. If you rotated that building, I think you would still keep that same entrance.
Uh, yes, the driveway location cannot change. That is being provided for us and in any future development on the property towards the north of us. So that's why we have it open, where that would be, that driveway would be shared by the neighboring property.
Okay. Lawrence, I know that we can't direct, uh, the zoning board of adjustment on anything like that. But if we had a, a CUP case with conditions that we've placed on it, does that use, does that go into any consideration at all at the ZBA? In other words, we, we, we're directing the orientation of this building a certain way. It may have a conflict with certain easements. Would that have a consider, would that be considered at the ZBA level?
I, I think it's going to depend on whether or not it's a variance application or whether it's going to be a special exception since there was a prior building there. Um, the standards for the two are going to be different and I haven't gone through that whole analysis. But at the end of the day, if there was an additional dedication made to comply with the thoroughfare plan and if there was a CUP that attached it as a condition, I, I do think that the ZBA would take that into consideration. I, I just couldn't tell you what their end result would be.
And I would think a special exception would be the route to go here as opposed to just a straight variance.
Uh, again, I, I hadn't seen the application yet, so I couldn't say. That, that's speculative and puts me in a bad position.
Right. Any other? Any other questions, comments?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I, I agree. I, I think we need to rotate it, um, figure it out. I think it, it, like, uh, what Ruchi said, neither one of them, neither the applicant or the property owners are going to be excited or sad. But I, I think it, it helps to solve the issue. Um, because I, I feel and, and can be compassionate to both sides.
Right. I just think we owe it to both sides to work through a compromise.
Uh, Mayor, sorry, one question. Lawrence, what happens if the ZBA says no to our, uh, change? Does it come back to us for overriding them?
No, sir, it does not. Uh, the ZBA decisions are final and if somebody wanted to appeal that, they'd have to go to district court. Um, however, it's-
What they'd have to do is come back with a different layout as far as the building. It would have to be longer and narrower so that the, if it was five feet or 10 feet or the, uh, buffer, um, the building would have to be altered.
Okay.
So it, it wouldn't keep them from doing it. It would just mean that they have to apply whatever that buffer is.
I'll, I'll tell you, Mayor, I do hear your concern and I think you spoke well. Um, you know, I, I, I've driven by this many times before it closed and it was a really ugly sight. And what they're showing today, I mean, I'm, I'm happy to see that they're willing to reinvest in our community. Uh, and I do hear the Fridays. Um, I, I, I understand your concerns. Uh, but at the same time, we're trying to keep a business and our tax rates and we talk about tax and that's coming up. And so it's a fine balance to keep. So I certainly hope you guys will consider turning this building. And, uh, I think hopefully today or tonight, you get a kind of a sense of where council will be when you do turn this around and kind of address as much as you can for the Friday's concerns.
So once we, from what I understand, if we rotate the building, that would be okay?
Or me, yes.
They haven't voted yet. So, um, if, if they vote for the CUP with a condition, whatever the P and Z conditions were, that would be something that might be included in the rotation of the canopy being on the Manville corridor instead of the Bailey corridor is a potential condition.
Yeah, and I'm learning of other screenings that could go way taller, you know, 12, 15, 18 feet that, that are green, evergreen, um, that would be, you know, screen, you know, this whole site from, from a lot of the neighbors, uh, over time. Um, last call for questions, comments?
Lawrence, just really quickly, so if we table, nothing happens? If we vote or amend, then what happens?
Yeah. If a CUP is approved, whether it have conditions or not, um, they could submit the building permit. However, if one of the conditions is that it be, the building be reoriented, they could still move forward with a building permit. If the applicant thinks that that is not possible because of whatever the reason is, uh, and they think that a variance or special exception needs to be granted for one of the setbacks or buffers, they would have to submit that application to community development who will then present that to the zoning board of adjustment. Then the zoning board of adjustment will either reduce that landscape buffer, um, or setback or not. And then depending on the result of that, they'll either build, well, if they want to continue building, they would have to comply with whatever the ZBA's action is.
Yeah, and, and if we gave direction to rotate it, this, this further goes to it. Um, and he goes to the ZBA, he's going to present both. If I rotate, um, I'm either going to have to cut into the 25-foot or I'm have to cut into the 30. Which one do you want me to do? This is what city council is telling me to do. Which one do you want me to go with? And that's-
I was just, it's a little confusing. I, the, the one thing I would add, I, I appreciate the applicant wanting to be amicable. Um, I still can't get away from where my position is. This story isn't over. Just keep up with it and we'll just see where it goes.
Yeah, Mayor, real quick, the owner, owner's here. So, um, or at least a representative, so you've obviously looked at this, this scenario where we're talking about moving the building or rotating it 90 degrees. What are your, what are your issues with that? Would you be willing, I mean, if it got to the ZBA and they said, well, no, you're going to have to shrink the footprint of your building, is that something y'all are willing to do?
Oh, I mean, we have reworked, we can make it work. The only thing is, if not the easements, then the driveway on Bailey Street will have to be adjusted. So our problem would be if that driveway would be adjusted, then there's the fuel truck and get in, get out of the traffic, uh, rotation within the property would be much better between the two driveways. We can make it work. If the dimensions of the building has to change, we can make that change.
Yeah. And to keep it, I think the original owner, uh, or the owner originally wanted the orientation to be the same as it was before.
Uh, the previous CUP that was submitted was submitted with a rotated view. It was in a different direction.
Okay.
But since the layout was not too keen and the, the traffic rotation was not really great, at that point, the text art permit was not approved yet. So it had to be changed then, after that.
All right. Last call, questions, comments? Lawrence, do you have something? Okay. Uh, with that, we will call a, a end of the public hearing, move to new business item number four. Ms. Cade, where do you, uh, I think, put it on the table and somebody else can amend or you can make an amendment, uh, on the front end. What, um?
There were three staff recommendations, one P and Z recommendation and then a potential recommendation from city council.
We put the, well, that's what, can we put that back up? They had it up there.
Yeah.
We've, yeah, but you got it.
She's going to read the, she's going to read the motion. Go ahead.
A consideration of possible action resolution number R 2023 dash CUP 2314. So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Do I hear a, um, uh, and make, make a motion to amend?
Make a motion to amend, uh, to add the three staff recommendations of the exterior building. Facade shall be developed in substantial conformance with materials as depicted in the facade renderings. Number two, the column supporting the fueling station canopy shall be wrapped with a masonry material that is consistent with an architectural element of the principal building. Number three, the dumpster enclosure shall be made with the same material and primary color as the main building. And then a fourth, uh, amendment, oh, excuse me, the, the masonry fence be an eight-foot tall fence. Um, and then the final and last amendment being that the building face, uh, 1128 or-
Campbell.
Yeah, 1128 Manville Highway, um, so that it's, uh, orientated a 90-degree turn from the, the site plan as shown. So moved.
Second. We have a motion, uh, motion and a second to amend. Uh, any other questions or comments on the motion to amend? Seeing none, Madam Secretary, we're voting on the motion to amend as, um, put on the table by Member Coza.
Mayor Pro Tim Coza?
Aye.
Member Carbone?
Aye.
Member Camp Car?
Yes.
Member Cade?
No.
Member Barry?
Aye.
Member Patel?
Aye.
The motion passes five to one.
We have an amended motion on the table now. Uh, with that, is there any final questions on the amended, uh, on the, on the table? Seeing none, Madam Secretary, we'll vote on the amended motion.
Member Cade?
No.
Member Barry?
Aye.
Member Patel?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Coza?
Aye.
Member Carbone?
Aye.
Member Camp Car?
Nay.
The motion passes four to two.
All right. Thank you for that. Thank you for working through that with us. Uh, like I said, not every time we get everything we want, but if we get a better product than we came in with, uh, everybody wins. We hope, uh, we can help you through the process as we, as we move that on. Getting that text stop permit and finalizing that helps. And so, uh, we don't want to mess that up with, with you. I mean, that's, that, that's going to anchor your site. So with that, we will move, um, to the consent agenda. Uh, I did receive one to be removed and that was item C as in Charlie. Is that correct? All right. Uh, didn't receive anything else. Mr. Barry, would you present consent agenda items A through L with the exception of C as in Charlie?
Yes, Mayor, I make a motion to approve the consent agenda items A through L with the exception of C. So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Madam Secretary, we'll call for the vote.
Member Barry?
Aye.
Member Patel?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Coza?
Aye.
Member Carbone?
Aye.
Member Camp Car?
Aye.
Member Cade? The motion passes five to zero.
Excuse me.
Hold on, hold on, hold on.
Sorry, I didn't realize a member Cade stepped out of the chamber.
Yeah, just, yeah, see if she's out there. We have to have all six votes on this, folks.
Trent, it wasn't me. Wasn't me.
Noted.
We can now resume the vote count, the voting.
Member Cade?
Aye.
The motion passes six to zero.
All right. With that, Mr. Patel, would you put item C on the table, please?
Uh, considering possible action resolution R 2023 dash- Considering possible action resolution R 2023 dash 2024, so moved. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Quick staff report.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a grant-funded award of a bid for 64 ballistic shields for our police department. This has been part of the overall plan to provide additional shields and capacity for when we have any type of incident. So with that, we recommend the award to Cop Stop and the estimated amount of $241,582.72.
Sounds good. Mr. Kamkar, you pulled this?
I have just two quick questions. When do we expect delivery on these? We have a timeline. I know that was a...
Mr. Fernandez, would you mind going to the podium?
Looks like what we've got in the agenda request is 183 days. My name is Rick Fernandez, and I'm the owner of Cop Stop. I spoke to Safariland, which is the manufacturer, earlier today, and they basically said roughly four months. And that's just simply because of the size of the grant for the state of Texas. All the orders have been submitted and/or are being submitted, and so they're processing it as we speak.
Right. I just want to thank the chief, this came out of post Uvalde action from last year. I appreciate the team. Their recommendation was to do these, and I'm excited that we're getting them done expeditiously and if the state of Texas could help us. And I'm glad that we hope we never ever use these things, but I'd love to have them in the back of our cars if we need them. Thank you for the council and their wisdom to help get this thing done. It's good to see us continue on this path.
Very good. My only comment is let's hope and pray we never have to use them. Glad we have them. Let's hope we never use them. Yep, yep. With that, any other follow-up questions, comments, concerns from council? Seeing none, Madam Secretary, we'll call for the vote.
Member Patel?
Aye.
Mayor Protim Coza?
Aye.
Member Carbone?
Aye.
Member Kamkar?
Aye.
Member Cade?
Aye.
Member Berry?
Aye.
Motion passes six to zero.
Sounds good. We will move forward in our agenda. I'd like to take about a 10-minute recess. We've been sitting for just a little bit and we're about to end our budget discussion. Why don't we take 10 minutes, reconvene at 8:10? At 8:10. With that, we'll move to new business continued. Number five, fiscal year 2024 budget discussion number three. With that, Trent, I'll turn it over to you and the staff.
Thank you, Mayor, and good evening, council, once again. And we're going to jump into budget discussion number three here in just a moment, which is going to concentrate on our capital improvement program. I did want to just kind of introductory remarks that we did include a memo in your package that answers all the questions from budget discussion number two. So if there's any questions regarding any of those, we can, you know, address those now. You know, if not, we're going to focus on the CIP tonight. So are there any things we need to address or want to discuss as far as any of the questions from last week that were in the memo? If not, we will move on to the CIP. So in March, we conducted a CIP workshop, and that's really the last time we discussed our capital improvement program in detail with all the financials and the budgetary impacts. So we're bringing it back tonight in advance of the budget adoption in September. And so, you know, that's kind of the, the way we set the schedule up this year. We moved the adoption of the CIP back in the, in the timeframe. And so we're again looking at how we modify that schedule for next year because I think we, you know, we had that March and now we're adopting. I think we need to have those closer together. So next year, we're going to look at, you know, having the CIP budget discussion in the June-July timeframe and put it closer to being, you know, getting to the budget adoption, tie those a little tighter together. So, you know, we're going to go through all the details, but just kind of give you an overall sense of the changes or any modifications since the March workshop. We did update some project cost estimates just based on inflation and the cost of projects and newer bids that we've seen come in. And then the other one is that we added funding so that we can complete the repaving work in Wesley subdivision. So we're wrapping up the drainage project in there, and we're, we're looking to allocate some funds towards redoing the streets because of the impacts of the construction. And we were able to identify some additional funds from another drainage project. We could apply to that and then needed some additional funds, so we've added that into the CIP budget that's, that's coming before you in the next couple of weeks. So with that, we'll jump into the PowerPoint presentation. Back it up one. We back up one? Just make sure I covered everything. So we're going to talk about our property tax-backed issuances first, talk a little background, ability to pay, the tax rates, and the future projections on tax rates for debt service, considerations when we're looking at reorganizing things. And then overall, look at the projects and the prioritization of those projects, the operation and maintenance impacts of the projects, and then any discussion. And then the second half, we'll go into the enterprise fund and basically walk through the same discussion on the enterprise side of things. So, you know, we always want to, you know, as we look at, at the CIP and our CIP workshops, we always refer back to our future with a purpose. We take our strategic priorities, comprehensive plans, and all the infrastructure master plans and, and how those all feed into the capital improvement plan as part of the output of that. So the overall on the CIP budgeting and overview is this is a culmination of all the information we passed, worked with you on throughout the year. So we got pre-award memos, we do project update memos, and then we do the bi-monthly milestone report on all the capital projects to keep you apprised of where, when we hit the different milestones in the, in the projects. And then we've, for the last, I think, three years or so, we've done our quarterly CIP update series, which does a deeper dive into each segment of the CIP, the projects in each of those segments, as well as the operational implications and operational status of those different areas. So today, we'll be discussing what we're building and what it takes to fund those and operate and maintain those projects. those and operate and maintain those projects. So this is just the schedule we've gone through the past year with the since the adoption of last year's CIP. We've gone through the different CIP update series and we're here March, are we and then the March 20th, we had the CIP workshop. And then the things we have upcoming are in September, the actual adoption of the CIP by resolution, followed by the October 16th, we'll have the parks and facilities CIP update series, followed in December by the water and wastewater CIP update series. And then we'll, of course, schedule those again throughout 2024. So just touching on our capital project financing overview, we've got the policy and planning piece of that, which is really like the workshop we did in March, and then the presentation tonight, and then the CIP adoption in September. And so just want to reiterate and remind everyone that, you know, our FY24 debt service rate, which is part of the budget we've been talking about, that's really locked in from the projects we've approved throughout this year and and the debt we've approved throughout this year. And so any changes to the CIP moving forward, those decisions impact the FY25 debt service tax rate. So then, of course, execution piece of that is that we present the budget, the budget gets adopted, and then in October, after we've approved the budget, we will do the intent to reimburse. So that authorizes us then to move forward and commits the funding to allow that work to begin in our on our FY24 projects. And then operationally, we'll come back in May of 24 for our annual debt issuance approval. And then in June, going through the process of actually selling that debt in in the third quarter of 2024. And then, of course, the debt payments follow the following year. So at this point, I'm going to hand it over to Rachel Winslow, our budget officer, to walk us through the other details within the CIP. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Epperson. Good evening, Mayor and City Council. The property tax based debt for the CIP involves our current debt. So we're legally required to levy a debt service tax rate that generates enough revenue to pay our debt service obligations. And our current debt service obligations are separate from our operations and maintenance portion of the debt service or tax rate. And our debt service amount for the upcoming fiscal year 24 is already fixed at 47.2 million. This is for debt service for projects that are already in the execution and operational phases. Our proposed debt service tax rate for fiscal year 24 is set at 33 cents per $100 in assessed valuation. And this proposed property tax rate will bring in approximately 41 million in property taxes. And the additional expenditures will be offset by a TERS reimbursement in order to pay the full debt service amount. Any decisions today will affect the property tax rate for fiscal year 25 and beyond. Our debt to AV ratio over time is shown here. This does indicate that our debt to AV with TERS and without TERS debt will continue to trend downwards with a brief spike in, I believe, 26 and 27. Our forecasted debt service tax rate based upon the February evaluation, our FY24 tax rate is lower than the February forecast of 34 cents with the bond election and the maximum forecasted debt service rate is lower than the February forecast of 36 cents. The projected total debt service increase is two cents from fiscal year 23, and our debt service obligation increased from 283 million to 302.9 million, primarily due to the addition of the fiscal year 28 projects, as well as inflationary increases on current projects. Our bond sales for the last three years, as well as the future years are shown here. This year, we're estimating around 98 million for fiscal year 24 between our certificates of obligation, general obligation debt, and our TERS certificates of obligation. These slides show our capital improvement projects in priority order. Priority one projects are projects that are tied to outside funding obligations and may or may not have city contribution or debt issuances associated with them, and delaying them could impact the outside funding. Priority two projects are projects that are new or include the repair or replacement of critical infrastructure. Some of these projects are already underway and others will be added in fiscal year 24. Several of these projects were recently approved on the bond election. Priority three projects are projects that could be postponed with moderate impact, but can also include projects approved on the latest bond election. And priority four projects are projects that could be postponed with no major repercussions, but also in this case have no debt service component at all. So the totals by the critical ranking are $14 million in priority one FY24 debt issuances, 81.4 in priority two, 3.3 in priority three, and $0 in priority four for an estimated total of $98.9 million in fiscal year 24 projects. We do evaluate the projects from the time of the intent to reimburse and throughout the year in order to issue debt that will be expended in a short order of time and that is truly needed. All projects we do do have a operations and maintenance component in one way or another. So for projects that we are estimated to complete in fiscal year 23, the additional O and M budget requirement in fiscal year 24 already included in the FY24 budget is 280,000. And for general fund projects slated to be completed in FY24 or to have work done in FY24, the additional O and M budget is estimated to be 2 million. That is because of staffing and equipment for the fire station. And with that, I'll turn it back over to Mr. Epperson.
So we did want to point out a legislative change to the council, and it's House Bill 3699, and it's relating to municipal regulation of subdivision and approval of subdivision plans or Platts. So a couple of implications with this, we may have to have some revisions to the UDC around plating. But the bigger point or part of it, we wanted to talk about tonight, associated with the CIP is that under it, we can no longer require dedication of land for a future street if that street is not included, funded, and approved in the CIP in a capital improvement program. So the, you know, the implications of that is that if we can't get those right away dedications, there's a couple of implications with that. The property owner could potentially build a building or structure that's too close or in the future right of way. So obviously, when you when you go to acquire that, you've got a much higher expense to deal with that being built in that location. And then, of course, just, you know, adding the cost of of all that right away acquisition to the projects themselves. So, you know, legal's taking a look at this, seeing if there's, you know, different ways we can deal with this, you know, because we still, we still have the ability to get water and sewer easements, and those things may, you know, preclude some of the the damages could potentially do. But the other, you know, option we've talked about is, is do you do we look at select roadways that are on our thoroughfare plan that have to be, you know, built out to a much wider right of way at some point in the future and go ahead and adding those to the CIP out in the fifth year, plan on doing that. And if there's if there's, you know, the means to not do those, you just keep moving those out in the future. But we're really evaluating, you know, the implications of that, but wanted to make council aware that there's potential, we might want to consider bringing back some of those projects, some of those road projects that are not in our plan right now and add those to the plan. So that that concludes the portion on the tax back debt. And so we open it up for questions, Mayor.
Open up for questions, comments. Real quick on the on the issue from was it 3699? Yeah, I get that and doesn't surprise me. It'll just cost more for our projects later, which it's just, it's a two edged sword, right? I mean, there's one thing about getting a dedication as a as a at a plat, and then there's the second about, you know, what do we do, you know, moving forward?
I think the consternation is not so much over if we had additional land right of way costs, but it's if a building gets built, you know, a new building gets built and it's impacted by the
So that that's why and we'll get more into the UDC, but that's really where I wanted to ask my question. And that is if we know a certain and when I'm going to ask a question, funded and approved in a CIP. So that means we typically only fund our one year.
Well, I think
Maybe two years. And then there's projects that are obviously moving forward, but
Yeah, I think that's a good point that, you know, there you're truly only funding the first year. But I think in a CIP, it's typically considered a five year plan. And if you've got a plan or means of funding it, that may be one way to have that considered. I think that's why we still got it. We're doing our legal research and trying to figure out exactly, you know, how this is going to be applied and what it means for
So what if something like, again, Broadway, Broadway, I mean, funding is dependent on the state, yet we know, you know, that project's going to move forward. I mean, part of it's funded, the other part has been put into the
Yeah, we do. Yeah. So one portion of it we know is funded, and then the other portion is not. So yeah, I believe it does have some reference to state plans as well.
Actually says county plans, not state plans and not HGAC plans and not federal plans. So it's municipality, but those are who adopt CIPs. So it makes sense there, but fully funded, I think, is going to be where the dialogue continues between us, the state legislature, and whoever was advocating for the bill, because, as you know, the first year is really what is funded on the CIP, but they reference the CIP, which is a five year plan. So it's fully funded, meaning you've identified the funding source and it's on the CIP? Or does that mean you have the money in the bank ready to go? Or you've already sold the bonds or the cash on hand? We don't know the answer to that question, which is why we don't have an answer for you tonight.
More to come. All right. So but in our UDC, would we be able to, even if it's not funded, we're not going to take the right of way, and we force buildings back? So we're not buying brand new buildings?
So there is a provision in our UDC where the city engineer has the authority to identify what we're going to call a reservation for a future thoroughfare. So we don't actually get the dedication, but we also may have the ability to stop somebody from building in that area. The difficulty with that comes, do you do the reservation for the roadway? Or are you able to do it for the roadway and the water and sewer easement or whatever the or the future landscape or the buffer or, you know, where does the line start? And that's, that's the issue that we're trying to make sure we understand the new legislation and how it affects that reservation language that's currently in the UDC.
So potentially multiple tools or options, but we just have to work through what's the best approach?
That's more of a protection, not so much going out and funding it, but just protecting us for something future that we're not buying a building that's four, five, six, 10 years old that
And it's not just protecting us, it's protecting the person who just established their building, who might have that building damaged.
Right.
And, you know, they chose that location for a reason.
Right.
And now, if this happens, their building could be damaged, and they might no longer be able to have a business there.
Yep. Yep. Open it up to questions on the tax back debt portion?
I'm going to get in the weeds here a little bit. So just bear with me. Can we go to slide 15 on the projects or tier one projects? The format on the labeling is the same across all the priorities. The items and the cash and other fundings, what are those kind of linking to? I understand the first four or five, I'm almost sure those are all geo type items for Hickory Creek, Garden Acres, some of these other items. But what are those items, the top and the bottom that aren't tied to anything else, the checkmark, but they've got some other cash or other funding?
So you're saying the ones that are in the right hand column, that's cash or other funding? What are those funding sources? Sure. So, you know, they're either where we've got agreements, like on the master drainage plan, we've got agreements with the EDC and the Drainage District Number Four to share in the cost of that. You know, the Hickory Creek, Garden Acres, those are the GLO dollars, as well as the NAP Activity Center, we do have some CDBG dollars there. Makawa is in the tip. So that's 80% federal funding for roadways through HGAC and Tech Dot. The Mobility and Thoroughfare Plan Update, that I believe is through HGAC. And then 518 corridor study is EDC. The 521 signal upgrade at Broadway, I'm not exactly sure that one may be associated with the FM 521 roadway expansion. So 521 is getting expanded. So that's probably making sure that we get our equipment and our standard signal in that project. So that's the type of funding.
For future items, can we just put cash or HGAC? HGAC, all these projects make a lot more sense as soon as you said that word. And it just was easier to come to my mind. The one that's kind of the middle of the road is 1.5 million, the Emergency Distribution Warehouse. Can you dig into that?
So this is the project we looked at probably a couple of years ago, located at the Fire Administration Building, behind the Fire Administration Building to for storing of materials and water and anything else we need to be planning on storing for an emergency response. And we've been able to work through, if Joel's here, he can give us, let's see, Joel or Rachel, the details on exactly where that that matching funds is coming from?
I believe it's FEMA. Not 100% sure, but we have a matching portion that's about 200,000. And then the remainder will come from, I'm hearing yes, behind me.
Yeah. So I think she's correct. It's FEMA because we had a, we had a project with FEMA that we didn't move forward. So we're able to turn that into this project through their alternative project process.
How much is FEMA giving us for that?
About the 1.5. Is that what FEMA is giving us?
No, that's the total project cost. And then we're contributing that 201, 7, 201, 782,000, and the remainder will come from FEMA.
So 1.3 from
I remember that from a few budget cycles ago, and we didn't have a federal plug into that.
We didn't. And I think the direction was if we can get it funded in this manner, then we move forward with the project. So we were able to do so.
Got it. 200,000 to 1.3, that's six to one. We'll take that. I can get that. And then on page, the next page over, the fiber optic item, the backbone, the priority for number two. It doesn't seem to have Magnolia from calling the Business Center. I just don't recall that one right off the top here, but we're using COs, I'm guessing some level of HGAC, something or other. I just get a little more color on that. It's kind of midway. It's right below the naditorium.
Sure. So we you have what the other funding is on that one? While she's looking that up, is this the project that's already actually underway? It's in design, so.
Oh, I can look into it and get back.
So I think I recall, I think we probably have some water and sewer funds in that because those connect to our, our SCADA system at lift stations. So we do fund a portion of that through water and sewer. Does that ring a bell, Rachel?
Yes, if it's fiber, it would be primarily cash funded and usually jointly if it links up with a water sewer plant or lift station between general fund and enterprise fund.
So I think so. That's a good point that she just made right there is that that's cash funded. So there's actually no proposed debt for that project.
The only other item is that fire range and the track, that didn't seem to make one of these four priorities. Can I get some color on that?
So I do see the law enforcement training center. Is that is that the one at the PSB that we're working on right now? We don't have the, we have the
Did I miss it? It's possible. Bond is kind of small.
Those are future year projects, I would think FY26 or later and a potential future bond election.
Okay, yeah, they're not shown here because we don't have them planned for any debt issuance in FY24. What's that?
The one by the public safety building renovation, is that is it the one right above there, the law enforcement?
The law enforcement training center, that's the old fire station for renovation for the law enforcement training center. The the track and the the firing range, that's not, there's no plan to issue any debt for FY24 for that. So that would be a future year. So that's why it's not showing up here.
Just I read the email from last week. Believe it or not, I read the emails. And I know that we closed the one down at ACC because they had a lead issue. So I'm still because they had a lead issue. So, uh, I'm, I'm still buying into the vision that Chief Spires has that goes over the rest of this academy that we're putting the time in to have that fire range and that track.
Right. So we, uh, we've been working through that process. We'll, we'll probably have an update out to you guys within the next few weeks. Um, we've got some new numbers we're looking at. It's just, we've been kind of concentrating on budget and hadn't been able to circle back around to that. But that, that work continues and, uh, I think we've got a, a good plan moving forward. It's just going to be when, when we're able to, to fund that and how we fund them.
Absolutely. That sounds great. Thank you so much.
Yes, sir.
Good questions. Uh, any other questions on this portion of the presentation? Seeing none, we'll continue on.
All right, I'm gonna, am I handing this back to you now? All right, all yours, Rachel. Thank you.
Next, we'll focus on projects related to our enterprise fund or water sewer fund. So the city is legally required to generate enough water and sewer revenue to pay the debt service obligations for projects related to that fund. Starting in fiscal year 2022, we split the debt service fund and the operating fund part. The proposed water and sewer rate increase is 14% for fiscal year 24. And the proposed fiscal year 25 or projected increase is 17%, which is a decrease from the fiscal year 23 projection of 19%. Our debt service payments of 34 million for fiscal year 24 is already fixed. Projects funded in this CIP by water sewer revenue are needed to ensure a safe and reliable system with adequate capacity to serve customers. This CIP contains 117 million in ongoing projects and planned debt to be sold in fiscal year 24. And among that, up to 18.1 can be paid back using impact fees. So we have our current year debt obligation, our fiscal year 2024 CIP will come back with the intent in October and then sell debt for the fiscal year 24 CIP projects. And those debt payments will then begin in fiscal year 25. So our debt payments are paid for by user fees and impact fees from our water and sewer system. And these payments are the major driver of our water and sewer rates. So we have three key metrics that determine our minimum utility rate increase. They include our bond coverage ratio of 1.15, our fund balance restricted for debt service of 20% and our enterprise operating reserve of 15%. Our bond coverage ratio is our fiscal year 24 revenue less operating expenses divided by our debt services. And with the 14% proposed rate increase, we will meet those obligations. The enterprise fund projects are prioritized a little differently. Our priority one projects are in process and/or tied to outside funding such as TWDB, Text Dot or Developers. There's one project that falls in this category. It involves debt that was already issued in fiscal year 25 and then, or 23, excuse me, and then future debt. Priority two projects are projects that are new repair or replacement of critical infrastructure and may or may not be tied to another project. Most projects are priority two in the water and sewer fund. So for fiscal year 24, the total projects by priority are zero for priority one and then 117.3 million in priority two debt issuances. The operations and maintenance impact for fis, for projects completed in fiscal year 24 or fiscal year 25 is estimated to be 82,692. And that concludes the water sewer based portion of our discussion.
All right. Uh, thank you, Rachel, for that. Uh, we'll open it up to questions and comments from council. Water and Sewer Fund, Enterprise Fund.
My guess as, you know, both of these sections have been planned. We've seen this so many times. I think staff's done good, good communication. So my silence isn't, I'm zoning out. It's, you know, you've done it well. You're telling the same story over and over and it's starting to sink into a lot of folks up here apparently. Thank you.
Well, I can't tell you that. It's sinking into my head. I apologize. My, my concern is the rate that we're moving up, and I get it. We have a lot of infrastructure, uh, projects that we kick the can down the road. But, uh, how do we get this message across to the users? Right. I mean, that's the only thing they see is 14% increase and, and then again, 17 and again, 17. And I'm having a hard time understanding it and I know we have a lot of needs. I mean, when I saw that, if you can go back real quick, I'm sorry, uh, right there, $230 million. I mean, that's just a huge number. And I, I certainly, uh, there's a lot of big numbers. And so I know the staff is doing a great job communicating with us. But I think it's very important that we understand, we got to get this out to the taxpayers to make sure they understand what we're facing.
To your point, um, one of the things that I've attempted to do this calendar year is anytime I'm speaking anywhere, I bring up water and sewer rates and why. Starting all the way back with the state of the city address, we had a whole section on what's driving our rates. We looked at the rate, the rate model, we, uh, projected out the five years. So we're letting people know what's coming. I can't talk to 130,000 people individually, just, you just physically can't do that. But one of the things that we do, just like the other night, the talk of the town, we did talk about the budget. We talked about what, you know, what's going on in the rates. So what, you know, how do we do it collectively, everybody that we're talking to? When the city's putting things out and social media and other places is, is backing it up with, with why it's necessary. Like in this particular case, the Longwood Water Reclamation Facility decommissioning, that plant's almost 60 years old. It's, it's outdated, it's inefficient, it's in the floodway. So every time we have a, you know, when you tell people every time it floods, that, that plant goes underwater. So they, they get the picture, you know, pretty quick. No one likes paying an additional 14%. No one. Business owners don't like it. I don't like it. Uh, my neighbors don't like it. But in that particular case, we don't have much of a choice. We're at 90% capacity. We're already operating on waivers from TCEQ because we know that project was coming. So how we do it, one-on-one, hard work. Josh and his crew continuing to, to back up the message. And like I said, I've, I've made it just about anytime I'm publicly speaking this year, anywhere, we talk about water and sewer rates and address it that way.
I'd like to add a few things to that, too. I think you heard me right away when I saw this slide tonight. For the fifth time, I think I stared at it for about 20 minutes the very first time. But, um, I think it's working. You know, Trent and I were having a discussion before the meeting earlier today regarding the new water plant treatment facility coming online. And the fact that we spend X amount of dollars when we're having, why don't you explain for the, the city Houston and the amount of money we spend on purchasing water from the city of Houston on the west side of town? And in the future, maybe we're not going to have to get into stage two water restriction and things of that sort. So I think overall the plan is working and I'll let Trent elaborate on that. He knows the numbers better than I do, but, um, give us a little insight into that.
Sure. So, um, yeah, I think it's a good time to talk about it since we just did enter, or we're going to Wednesday enter stage two drought restrictions. So, you know, we, right now, our, um, we have two major sources of water, West 288. And that's, uh, 6 million gallons a day, take point from City Houston. And then the well at Kirby, uh, which is somewhere, somewhere around two, two and a half million. I may have that a little off, but somewhere around that. And so, you know, we're, we're pretty dependent on that, that, and during, during the summer months on the City of Houston connection. We have that set. Uh, it's basically a take or pay at 1.3 million gallons per day. So we pay a certain rate there. And then anything we take above and beyond that, we pay a surcharge for. So the water rates go up. And that, and that's expensive water in the first place because it's, it's like a wholesale price. Cause unlike the, what we get from the southeast plant at Alice Street, we're not a, a co-owner in the plant on the west side. So it's expensive water. So once we have the, uh, surface water plant online, um, you know, we're looking at taking that down to where we're just taking the take or pay amount, the minimum amount. We still have that additional capacity available in the summer months, uh, if needed. But, uh, I think if we had, you know, if we were able to have the surface water plant completed at this point. And then on the east side, we've got the Bailey Plant and Magnolia Plant, uh, those water wells under a refurbished process they've been under for a couple of years. If we had all, once next year, when we have all these online, we would unlikely be even having to look at, at stage one or only stage one, um, kind of everything else being the same. So, um, you know, the investments are good, the, the long-term investments the city made even back into the late nineties to get the water rights to build that surface water plant are good. It's, 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 it's just, uh, you know, uh, it's, it's good investments. We are seeing on the wastewater side a little bit where our, our plants have, and we've drug those along as long as we can. And now we've got to renew that infrastructure, um, like we have at Reflection Bay. And we're doing so at JHEC right now. We've got to do the same at Berry Rose and Longwood. And that really sets us up for long, long-term success, having, uh, really renewed, uh, the, the bulk of our plants over, over a fairly short period of time. Um, you know, it's kind of like the growth hit us. Got us to a point where we really had to do a lot of that at the same time. That's what we're dealing with. So.
So I look at that, I listen to that and I reflect on my water bill that I received just a couple of weeks ago. We, I used 32,000 gallons of water last month, apparently. It's a lot of water, but it's about a $400 bill, right? It's extraordinarily expensive or it seems like it's really high. But, um, over time, you know, the city of Pearland has made these investments in updating our facilities. And it is a big number, but at least we're going to have in the future, we're going to have water to be able to, bring into our homes. And sure, if I have to go on water, water restriction for my yard, so be it. You know, but we're going to have drinking water in Pearland and we're going to have water for those, all the residents of Pearland. So, um, it's kind of a bittersweet, bittersweet deal for me because we have making that, made, made those investments. So I'm happy about that, but we're having to pay right now for the future.
And I think the alternative is we end up, you know, as Jackson, Mississippi, and we have boil water notices every other day because they didn't keep up with their, with their infrastructure and their growth. And I think that's a worse scenario than even this, because then you're paying emergency work to get done. You're, you're paying extra to get it done overnight. And again, nobody, including me, wants to pay a 10%, 12%, 17%, you know, increase in water. But also don't want to have our city in a situation where we're on the news 24/7 because we could have planned this out a little bit better. Most of the cities that are in that dire situation, the warning signs were there, they ignored them. Just completely ignored them, said, well, let's kick the can down the road. I'll just tell you, the city of Houston, their northeast water plant, 1.7 billion dollar increase in size of that plant. Three or four administrations ago knew they needed to do that plant, but kicked the can down the road. All those administrations said, nope, not on my watch. I'm not going to face the public and do it. And so now they're at a critical situation where you, in, in that area of town, you can't even get a permit to build a business or build a house. There's, there's no water, uh, there's no water rights to it. So, uh, I don't know that that's a better situation than when they're in. And I guarantee it's costing them more if that had, if they'd have done it 10 years ago. You know, it would have, number one, it had been done, it would have cost 1.7 billion dollars. So lessons learned through that. Remember Camper?
Trent, I've got a couple of point of information items. Can we go to slide, looks like 34, I guess the next one? Is that 34 or it's 34 on this PDF? So maybe it's the next one after that. So the city of Pearland is issuing 117.3 million in debt issuances in this upcoming calendar year?
That's the current plan as reflected in the CIP and will bring you the intent in October. But we evaluate those projects throughout the year based off of the engineering and public works ability to do the work. And we will end, only end up issuing debt that we actually need in fiscal year 24. So there's the possibility for that to come down.
Is that yes or no?
That's, yes, that's the current plan.
So, yeah, so that's the maximum amount annually. We do the intent to reimburse in October. We don't do our debt cell until, you know, June or so of next year. So we're able to evaluate at that point, how far did we make it into these projects? Do we need the full 117? And typically just, you know, the way projects progress, we're able to pull that down. Because we got a plan for, you know, we plan for in the CIP. If, if everything goes right on every project, we need to make sure we have got the money to pay for them. Inevitably, um, you know, where we end up in, in the springtime, when we evaluate that, that number typically comes down. But that would be the maximum amount.
In the scenario you're laying out just for, I'm an Aggie, I'm going to use a round number. Instead of 117, we use 110. What do you guys do with the 7 million that we authorized?
We, we do not sell it. We.
Will there be like a notice or an email or how do we know here on the dais?
So just.
That 7 million didn't go up?
Just like the, the COs and the public improvement bonds and the GOs we brought to you earlier this year. We give you an accounting of, you know, here's what was in the intent to reimburse the 117 million dollars. We'll show you exactly what each project needs at that point and how much we need to sell. So you, you actually take action on that and see that, um, at the point where we're ready to sell debt.
The team's edification, can we just bring this slide back whenever we do that? So we can kind of identify that. It kind of gets lost in the sauce a little bit.
Yeah, we always start with what did we plan on selling? And it'll have the projects and 117 and then the next column is what we're actually selling. So same numbers that make that, uh, make this up will be shown there.
Then going back to your, your surcharges comment. When we're doing the stuff out of the Shadow Creek Plant and you said we had to buy 1.5 million or 1.3 million in gallons. And then there's essentially an accelerated rate for every gallon over. What was that during your time? What was that accelerated amount when we were taking over and above the, the contracted threshold?
I don't know the exact rate. Years ago, when I knew the rates, it was somewhere around an additional 85 cents per thousand gallons.
Was that maybe in the hundreds of thousands of dollars of extra payment? Is it a million dollars per year?
I can, we can bring that information back to you. I know we, you know, we evaluate, um, setting that we've evaluated back when we set that take or pay, um, across the entire year. So, you know, you, obviously it cost us more in the summer months because we're taking more than the 1.3. But, you know, you, we have to look at in the winter months.
May not take.
That we, we may not take any over that amount. And so, you know, you look at what's the minimum payment we would make any given year on an average year. Obviously a year like this, you know, you, you can't.
Was it, was it paid annually, monthly, quarterly?
We, we pay that bill monthly, I believe.
I, I'd love to see the last five years of data on that, just out of curiosity, in a memo or a later email.
Sure.
And then you made an interesting comment about the, the plants on the water side that we're updating. And you said that they're kind of in quick succession. In your experience, is that a normal occurrence or are those spread out more evenly?
So that was on the wastewater side. Um, so a, a lot of it's driven by our growth. So on the wastewater side, uh, under our permits with TCEQ, when those plants hit 75% capacity, we have to start the planning, um, to, to expand those projects. And then when you hit 90, you have to pull the trigger on starting construction. And, you know, one of our experiences over the past 10 years is that we grew so rapidly out in the Shadow Creek Ranch areas that when we hit 75 and we started the design, we were at 100 before we could, could even, could even complete the design. And so we had to take some kind of extraordinary measures with a package plant to do some things out there. So with JHEC and these others, um, you know, we're trying to make sure, we started some of the preliminary work in advance of hitting the 75, but just making sure we're doing those. And then, you know, the, the JHEC plant and the, and the Berry Rose plant are, are much older than the Reflection Bay one were as well. So those plants have some of the original components. And like the mayor mentioned with Longwood and Berry Rose, some of those date back to the sixties. And so, you know, it's, it's really time as we upgrade the capacity of those that we upgrade, you know, a lot of the, the technology and everything else within those. know, a lot of the, the technology and everything else within those plants.
I can get my slides queued up, the last three items on this. The water situation is what it's going to be. And I, I don't pretend to try to yell at the council or anybody else. I mean, it took us 50 or 60 years to get here. And I hate to say it, it's going to take us 10, 20 years to get through here. That, that water plant, if last time, we have to, I think we have to have our CIP update on that pretty soon, Trent. I think member Coza brought that up, that we probably haven't had that in our 90 days. But, you know, we didn't get to the situation overnight. The Berry Rose facility, the John Head Hard Growth Facility didn't turn 60 years old, 60 years old overnight, and the renovations needed there didn't just come out of thin air. And I would tell you, we're, we're doing, what, over half a billion dollars just in the water plants. And then you add in the surface water plant, now you're over half a billion. That's a lot for any citizen business to take on. And I'm not going to belabor that. There's a lot of people here are going to give us good reasons why we need to do that. I don't necessarily disagree. But timing in a lot of businesses means everything, and our timing just sucks right now. I don't know how else to say it. And, and we didn't cause COVID, we didn't cause inflation, but we've got to, we've got to suck it down. There are things, though, that we do control. And so I want to bring this up here, and this, I appreciate the, the council indulging me. This is our general fund expenses for the year. They're up 3.6% year over year. This is not Alex's numbers, this is City of Pearland's numbers. If you want to go on the website, under our budgets, it's there. In fairness to the staff, that top line number of 114, 257 has been adjusted now to just 114, just a hair over due to the, the contract item that they did on the landscaping. But I just want to present consistently what we showed, so nobody asks us that we're doing anything funny. But that 3%, 3.6 number is real. That's year over year. That's, that's, that's math. It's not Alex's opinion, it's just math. We control all that spending. There's no TCEQ involved telling us what we can and can't do, what we have to do, have to not do. That's our choice. So can we go to the next slide? This is our property tax worksheet, state mandates this. You can see for yourself, you know, what the calc's are. The 7%, 7.9 is a derivative, a couple other budget inputs. But this is not just general fund expenses, but this is real money. There's, there's no Pearland money, it's your money. City of Pearland doesn't have a printing press. And the last thing I'll, I'll point out in this discussion, and the reason it dovetails in the water is, the water issue is something that we have somewhat control, not total control. We have to have clean water. Don't disagree on that. But we, we do have options on what we spend money on and what we don't spend money on. Let's bring that next slide up, Josh. Our friends in the city of Alvin decided they wanted to spend their money, or in some cases, not spend money, and increase their homestead exemption to 20%. And this is not old, this is, I don't even think 60 days old. They've made a tangible choice. City of Pearland's homestead exemption is 2.5%. I'm starting to beat the drum on that. I will continue to beat the drum on that. A member, a member Epperson. City manager Epperson has committed for us to have a meeting, I want to say the second meeting in October, to discuss this critical item. We have a discussion that we can continue on in FY '24, '25 about increasing the homestead exemption. I can't do anything about water, or that's 14%. But there are seven people here that can decide that they want to increase the homestead exemption and give relief to taxpayers. And that's important. And so I would just tell you, we are up 3.9%. We are spending money. I would like to spend a little bit less money and try to give relief. I can't do anything about water bills. The math is the math. We're going to vote to keep having clean water. But we can vote here very shortly, hopefully the next six months to start working on this exemption thing. So I appreciate the, the council for giving me the, the space to say these comments. I understand they're not exactly the same, but I think there is a piece of water. We can't control those weight increases. This is something we can't control. So thank you.
Remember Cam Carr, the, the one thing about Alvin, they're at 14 cents over the no new revenue wait, rate, while we're only 10 cents over the no new revenue rate. You think that's directly related to the homestead exemption?
I would tell you that the city of Friendswood has found a way to be at 20%. The city of Katy has increased their homestead exemption. The city of Waco, in this last year, went to the max. City of Carrollton has increased. We are not the only city that has costs, we're not the only city that has clean water needs. We, we just have to make a conscientious decision. 114.2 million is going to get voted on by the seven people that sit up here. And they're going to get to make a decision, do they want to spend on those items? Or do they want to help the taxpayer? And you can do both. But the, the, the chart, and we could pull my slide back up one more time. And I thank you, Member Kate, for bringing this up. We'll go back up to the first one. That chart is at a 30-degree angle. It is consistent upward trajectory. That is a choice. That's all I'm saying.
I would argue that might be 45 degrees.
45 degrees, fair enough.
And I, and again, I, 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 I thank you for, Member Cam Carr, to, to point that out. I'll also point out that Alvin, even with a 20% decrease, or 20% homestead tax exemption, is increasing their property taxes intake by 16-plus percent. So where does that all go to? It goes to the business community. So there is an offset when you do that. Not saying that we shouldn't do it. We should do it with eyes wide open, with data, and make smart decisions as we move forward, as we've always said. I'm also going to make sure, for the record, yet again, this time last year, we talked about the homestead tax exemption. I asked council in that meeting to bring it up at the strategic planning workshop in February. It was not mentioned a single time that day. It was not mentioned a single time to the consultant in the questions leading up to it. So then we get to June, we have to have that passed and approved, so it can go into effect. By June 30th, we had a workshop where we did discuss it and deferred to get through budget where we're going to do it. And we've got some promises and assurances that we'll have that discussion come October. Hopefully, we can work through it, and we devise a plan to do something for our homestead exemptions as we move forward. But I'll also point out that even in Alvin, it's probably the biggest budget in their history. As they're continuing to grow, they'll, next year, have the biggest budget in their history. I'll also note that they're now having to make those same decisions in their water and sewer. They'll have a 12% increase in water rates this year, because they are, they are struggling as a growing city to keep up with demand. They had to make a decision a couple of years ago. Probably one of the biggest decisions, biggest purchases, was a upgrade to a lift station that was holding back growth. Early on, was about a $19 million purchase. I think they were able to get it in around 15 million. And part of that 12% is because of that, they are now having to make the decision to spend $40 million on an upgrade to one of their sewer plants. Again, directly attributable to growth. It's where we were 20, 25 years ago. I remember sitting here, making the decision to spend 40 million on the Southeast Water Plant in Houston, biggest purchase in the city's history at that point. But it worked out. It's what we needed. It's what we needed to keep up with the growth. So, and I, I'm, I'm very, very careful not to compare our city, our neighboring cities. Alvin staff proposed a 66 cent tax rate. Council actually increased it. What they're going to the, out there to the public is 68 and a half. So that council, while they gave that, have also raised the rate up even more than where they are. They're still lowering their rate. But as Member Kate said, no new revenue rate is still 14 cents lower. But I'm, I'm real careful because these area cities like Alvin, Manville, City of Friendswood, none of those have a full-time fire department. None of those pay property taxes on full-time fire like we do. That's a big differentiator between our cities. When I remind people of that, they, they're not thinking that. Well, they're thinking, well, your tax rate's, you know, 62 or 63 cents, you're going to this. Well, they're, you know, five or six cents, you know, lower than that, right? Add full-time fire, see what happens. You can't compare one city to the next. We're here to make sure that our city is run efficiently and in the best, you know, way possible. The other, and last thing I'm going to say, and I'll turn it back over to council, is you're right. We make conscious decisions and choices on what items we're going to pay for in the budget. In that MNO side of the budget, that's where the discretionary spending is. I've also, through this process, haven't heard a single item to cut. Haven't heard it since the first budget workshop up until now. What do you cut from that budget? As we all know, the line was to keep it as flat as possible. We have our own inflation. We even have staff that we have to pay. And I've heard nothing to be cut. So I would challenge between now and our first vote on the budget, if we want to cut something, to cut.
Mayor.
Member, wait, wait a minute. Everybody gets your opportunity to talk. Come back.
Thank you, Mayor.
You know, I hear council member Cam Carr talking about this tax exemption. And since I'm new, maybe I missed the point when we had the workshop. On one hand, you want to increase the tax exemption at 20%. From my understanding, we're going to go up on tax rate. It's not going to decrease our expenses. We're going to still be at 114.2 million. All you're going to do, and earlier, I think there was some information provided from last budget meeting about the commercial and residential. So you're going to pay from one hand to the other, the other hand being the commercial, for $38 a year savings, we're going to destroy the businesses. What did I miss in there?
Mayor, may I respond? He directly, directly commented back to me. All right, thank you, Mayor. You know, Member Patel, I think it's extraordinary that we are where we are. The, the reality is, we didn't cause COVID, we didn't cause inflation, we didn't pump millions, or sorry, billions of dollars into the economy from the federal government. All we can control is what we do. Josh, can we put that, that chart back up really quickly here? No, I'm going to try to be brief here. The 45-degree angle that was pointed out has been from 2013. I bet you if we added more years, it would continue. The reality is, the businesses are doing better. Sales tax receipts are up, other items are up, water is up. The only item that we control is the general fund spending. To the mayor's point, there have been no proposals provided. Last year, I could not get a second to propose cutting one less penny from a majority of the same people sitting here today. So there's, it doesn't seem to be a real interest in cutting the spending. Member Patel, I'm just going to be really honest with you. I haven't heard anybody interested. I haven't heard anybody speak to the taxpayers' plight. But what I would tell you is this, if we increase the exemption, and by definition, we are reducing the assessed value that we can tax against. And in theory, if we go to some of these, these staff members, they would be willing to cut because literally, they literally by law cannot go and collect those dollars and go and put them in the general fund. I had a member of the staff, a very senior member, who has one of the largest budgets in the city, the fire chief, said that if he was asked, he would make a cut if he was asked. So it's not for lack of the staff members' willingness to do it. Member, sorry, Member Epperson, I'm sorry, it's two times. City manager Epperson has been willing to cut, but he needs direction. There needs to be four people that want to go do the cutting. The businesses have always found a way to thrive here. I believe in them. I, I am, more importantly, believe that the, the people who go to those businesses need relief. The, the water presentation that you saw showed almost, what, 5 billion, sorry, half a billion dollars improvements, 117 being issued this year. There, there is no relief. Everybody who pays water is going to pay 14% more expensive water for using the same water. I can't do anything about the water rates. We can do something about the general fund expenses, and that's my intent.
Just to remind everybody, we've hashed this out in June in a workshop. And to Member Cam Carr's point, businesses pay more for water. They pay out the no's compared to residents, and it's structurally that way. And adjusting the homestead exemption up, as we fully discussed in June, does the same thing. We'll discuss it again.
Very great response. In that June meeting, there was not a discussion about water or water rates. At this meeting, there has not been one utterance of, could we look to reduce the water rates or what we're doing on the debt, what we're financing? I have not heard one item, maybe the member, the mayor's heard it, maybe somebody in the audience has. But there doesn't seem to be anybody concerned about the businesses paying high water rates. It doesn't appear to be. I haven't heard anything. Doesn't mean that it doesn't there. Just nobody has spoken about their concerns about how much debt we're issuing for water.
I actually said, none of us like paying a higher rate. I, I said that like 15 minutes ago. I said it two, three, or four times while I was talking. So, yeah, somebody has said, we're concerned about everybody, everyone. That includes homeowners, that includes businesses, that includes our school districts, that includes our nonprofits, our churches, everybody else paying a higher rate. So I, I want to, I want to make sure that that's on the record. We are concerned about paying higher. At the same time, we have an aggressive CIP for a reason, for a reason. I attempted, even on the large wastewater, to see how we could do that project differently, to save some money, save some operating cost. It, it was a great exercise for our staff to go through, to make sure that we're doing things the right way. So it had some benefits, ultimately, to make sure that we're doing that. So on the record, I don't think there's anybody up here that is happy that we have to raise rates to where we are. I don't think there's a single person happy with that. There's a reality of where we need to be. And so I just also want to make sure, most homeowners, the vast, vast, vast majority of homeowners have a 5/8 meter. There's a handful that have a little bit larger meter. You have a residential rate. As that meter size goes up to a 1, 1 inch, to a 2 inch, to a 3 inch and above, your base rate goes up. So a business pays a lot, and you may use the same gallons, but your base rate's much higher. So there is a shift. There is a subsidy that businesses pay to help homeowners. And so as we walk through the exemptions, as we walk through that discussion, we've got to have the right discussion about what's right for our whole city, including the businesses. And I'm not saying that we don't change the exemption. I've said that from day one. I've also said, and you've agreed, that we probably shouldn't go from 2 and 1/2 to 20 in one year because of that. And so we should have some kind of a plan on how we walk through that. And that's what I hope we have in a holistic approach with our council, and we're not back here in June going, what do we do on the exemption?
Excuse me, Mayor? As a lot of the discussion seems to be about a potential exemption and where that could be, that, that's absolutely a great discussion for us to have, probably in October, when it's posted as an agenda item. I, I think that there's part of that that goes with the item that's on tonight's agenda. But, but I fear we're getting far away from it, that my duty is to call us back to focus on the item for tonight, not the tax exemption.
Good comment. But also want to make sure others who have not spoken under this have the opportunity. I think everybody has.
I haven't.
And it's right, Mayor Protim did have the mic next. Sorry, Ms. Kate.
Thank you, Mayor. As far as the, the water issues that we have in our city, we're, we're basically at a threshold where the, the age of our wastewater and two plants, if we don't do it, we'll turn into a Jackson, Mississippi. The consequence of that with wastewater, you go to flush the toilet, and it's not going anywhere. They've put it off and put it off, and the articles that I've read about it, they're at about a billion dollars. And that's in a city that's equivalent to our size, there are about 150,000 people. So with that being said, we are taking it chunks at a time. And yes, it's not pleasant right now. But as our predecessors back, my grandparents' generation, when they came out of the war, they built roads. And they built roads to connect our country. And I'm not going to sit here in the city of Pearland and let our infrastructure fall apart to the point where we can't utilize it, and live in a substandard city. So from the water side of it, that's one thing that, that's a necessity that we have to take care of. From the general fund side, when you get into homestead exemptions, when you do that, basically, you push it off onto the businesses. Ask New York, ask California, why they're moving to Texas? This is cheaper. This is cheaper. Valuations on our property are going up because we have more people moving into this state from other places because it's cheaper to live here than there. And until that stops, you're swimming upriver. Um, if you want to push the tax burden from homeowners to businesses, it becomes a point where you'll push the business out. The end result is now you have nothing but residential. And no matter how high you go, you bear that brunt on residential. So you have to be very careful when you start pushing down that road, just saying, hey, I don't work here, I don't do anything but live here. So let's push that off onto the businesses because that's all that matters.
And to our legal counsel, let's start finishing this up.
Uh, no, I've got, I've got one more question. Chief Taylor, on the 1% that, uh, member Cam Carr talked about, I'd like to get your response on the 1% that, uh, it spoke about that you were willing to give up.
Well, to be clear, thank you. Uh, to be clear on the 1%, whatever the direction of the council is, is a direction obviously we'll follow. Um, but to arbitrarily cut 1% would hurt services to our community. So everything we have in our budget is based on needs, empirical data, not wants. And so what we have out there are the needs that we need to protect and serve the citizens that we have out there in our community. I'd also argue that once you give 1% exacerbates. So for instance, for us in the fire department, our initial request were six firefighters, roughly three firefighters is $298,000. That's 1% of our budget. Um, three of those firefighters weren't able to obtain, but through creative budgeting, we were allowed to utilize and obtain three firefighters based on our part-time, uh, accounts that we have utilizing those funds, making it a net zero add, another 1%, which the 1% we didn't get on that. So in my mind, we've really sacrificed 3% to get the three firefighters we are going to get and we're happy to do that. But if we cut any more, it's going to take us more and more kicking the can down the road as we spoke earlier about getting that caught up as we move forward. And I know that speaking as myself as a director and being in the rooms with all the other directors, I know that we were directed by our city manager to keep our budget as flat as possible and base it on empirical needs. And I've watched everyone, as we talked about, roll their sleeves up and do the best they can to keep this budget flat and also take into consideration the, uh, the influx of inflation that we have based on the contractual obligations we have within our respective departments. That's where our raises are. That's where the increases are, but it's not nominal increases that we're asking for. It's, it's increases that's based on the contracts that we have in place. And, uh, I think that to keep that where we are and keep it flush and provide the citizens the exceptional services that we do in all our departments to our citizens, I think we've done a magnificent job with that, working with our finance department.
Thank you, Chief Taylor. Also, Chief Fires, at that same meeting, you were asked to cut 1%. I'd like to get your, your feedback.
Um, what he said, except for the need more firefighter part.
I think it just, it just goes to say that we have a level of service here and, and to remember Cam Carr's, you know, point, we do control that spending. We do control that discretionary part. So it, it, it comes down to level of service. Uh, how quickly do you want an officer at your house when you call? How quickly do you want an ambulance or a fire truck there? How quickly do you want, you know, somebody out at 3:00 AM if, if, if there's a, a problem on the ground and we have to get a public works, uh, professional out there quickly? Uh, how quickly do you want those types of things? Even in our parks, uh, if you, uh, go to the rec center, you go and, and do certain things at our parks and it's the level of service that's there. Uh, and one of the big things that we get pushed back often is customer service. And, and I think there's a big need here to increase our, our public service and a lot of that is increasing our, our, um, service level. And, and it's hard to increase the service level with, uh, with the level of spending that we have. And so I think it's that balance between level of service and where we would like to be and what our citizens would like to see, uh, that, that really becomes the, the, the conflict when we have these discussions. And I, and it's a great discussion. It's great questions and everybody gets their thoughts on the line as we wrap up.
Just really quickly, thank you, mayor. Um, you, you mentioned earlier in your comments, you hadn't received a proposal. Is that, do we have an understanding that that, any proposals provided will get the light of day to be seen?
You have the, you have the authority and the right to put forth, just like you have in years past. Just like you have with, there's supplementals, there's all that. So you have a right to.
All right. So we will.
And everybody has a right to judge it based on its merit.
No, I just, I, here's the thing, I've tried to be kind to Trent. I know he's dealing with a, a nuclear waste cleanup and, uh, I've tried not to badger him, but I will be bringing at least one proposal. Uh, I don't anticipate more than that. Um, I, I, I have heard the comments of, well, we don't have six months to review them. And then when they get, they, they, they've provided, well, we don't have all the forever data. Well, we've only had the budget for 30 days anyway. So, uh, I, I do look forward to having a clear light of day discussion on that. Um, and so thank you for that.
I, I would be sensitive to staff's time and element. I mean, when, when this, I mean, if you spring it to them on, on, on the same day as the budget, that's kind of hard to, that's kind of hard to get to.
I'll, I'll bring one in the next week.
I mean, that's, to be fair, yeah.
Fair enough. And the last thing, we had a discussion about the two staffers. Uh, did we get any memos if those items were necessary? Wait, they, they were about roughly $200,000. Trying to get back to the topic. Uh, were $200,000 additional staff for this year?
Is that, are you talking about on the enterprise side?
Correct.
The memo attached to this agenda item's got a full detail.
We have that.
Information associated with that. Yes, sir.
All right. Thank you.
Great discussion. I did want to say something to member Cam Carr's about the water bill for business. Um, when we look at the graph, the city of Pearland for residents, the water is right in the middle of other cities, but the business is at the far end of the high. And it, and that doesn't make sense to me. Uh, member Carbone said that he pays through the nose or through the ears. I can't remember which one he said for water. Pays through something, but, um, but he's an accountant and so why is his water bill astronomical? He's not making tons of pasta or doing anything outrageous with water as an accountant. I don't understand why his water bill is.
I said it goes.
Any more than, than mine at home.
It goes to meter size.
That doesn't, but that's.
Where he offices, his office complex, if it's got something greater than a 5/8 meter, he's going to pay a, a larger charge than he would, than he would if he was in a house. And so that, that's the way a council four, five, six years ago decided to base the rates. And you're starting to see other cities move to volumetric rating. Uh, so I expect to see, as the city of Pearland is one of the highest on business, I expect if other cities start going that direction, you'll see us migrate more towards the middle just like we have on residential. And as other cities around us continue to face the growth challenges and everything else, you'll see their, uh, residential rates start going up. Uh, it's, it's just inevitable that they, that they do that.
So mayor.
Great question.
When, when those rates, uh, when we change that base rate to be a meter base size, uh, the purpose behind that and the, and the, the kind of the, the philosophy behind that is that for businesses that have to have larger meters, we've got to have more capacity in the system. And so that's wastewater capacity, that's water capacity at our plants because they do have the ability to take that much more water. Um, so that's, uh, that's what was behind that. When that was initially adopted, um, basically we, we used the mathematical calculation for how much additional water will come through that, that larger meter compared to a 5/8 inch meter and used a multiplier, uh, to get to, to the base rate for those larger meters. Initially, the council adopted that at about, uh, we had a factor in there where it brought that down. And then a couple of years later, when we were looking at some pretty significant rate pressures, um, we went ahead and moved that up even further. So it's based on the additional water capacity and wastewater capacity we have to have to serve, um, those larger, um, users. If, whether they use it or not, we have to have the capacity to serve them.
And all I know with another four or five million people that'll move into this greater Houston area over the next, you know, 25 years, uh, other locations around the greater Houston area are going to be having these same growth conversations and pressures that we are. Um, so we're not alone in it. Uh, and I'm, I'm not poor boy and me too, sorry me, all that kind of stuff. It's just, it is what it is. And, uh, a lot of people are moving to our state. A lot of people are being birthed here. We'll have over 100,000 births in the greater Houston area this year. Just, you know, think about that each and every year. So, uh, it's just more and more people that are going to live here, you know, school infrastructure, roads, uh, and the like, that's going to be needed in the greater Houston area over, over the next 25, 30 years. So last call for questions. I don't see anybody moving that direction. Trent, follow up?
Thank you, mayor. We'll, we'll just close things out. Um, there should have been one more slide.
Nope.
Oh, I thought we had the schedule moving forward.
Oh.
We leave that out. So the schedule moving forward is, uh, we will have on September 11th, we will have our budget public hearing. Uh, we will have the first reading of our budget, first reading of our tax rate, and then we will follow that up on September 25th with our public hearing on our tax rate as well as our second reading on the budget and second reading on the tax rate. And so, uh, that'll wrap up our, our budget season. So appreciate all the time, uh, with the council and, and mayor going through the budget and, and getting through all the questions and, uh, look forward to, to, uh, September. Thank you.
Stuff. So we'll move forward and our agenda matters are moved from consent agenda there. Uh, we took the one, uh, right on the heels of it. Uh, other business there was none. Mayor council issues for council discussion, there is none. So we'll move to adjournment at 9:26.